Okay, it's 6:30, we're gonna start. Good evening, everyone. We call this meeting to order. City Clerk, take the role, please.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Stuyvesant? Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Here.
Mayor Svetchen?
Here.
All members present, ma'am.
Great. We're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. Girls, do you wanna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Father Damien, invocation, please.
Good evening, everyone. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the Scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authority to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, let us pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking you that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even while there is honest disagreement, peace in their lives and joy in their task. Let us pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and around our beloved city of Sunny House Beach. It is in your blessed name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Before we have the opening message, I just wanna acknowledge some guests that we have in the audience. We have, from the town of Golden Beach, we have the Director of Capital Improvement Projects, Lisette Rivera. Thank you for being here. And Lieutenant Perez, thank you very much for being here. I also wanna acknowledge the former Mayor Edel Cupp and Vice Mayor Lou Thaler. Okay, if, can we play the opening message, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that come before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74, Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicant comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or do not see speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers.
Okay. I just wanna remind everyone that we have very strict decorum rules. So please, when you do speak and you come up, everything you, you address this body through the chair. You may sign up to speak at any time for our agenda items. The speaker cards are in the back. You can speak for, against, or to get information. And again, those are just on the agenda items. And again, I want you to please remember to keep to your time and once your time is up, to just, you know, finish up and be respectful of this body. Okay, we have some changes to the agenda. City Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, do you wanna just start with the approval of the minutes?
Oh, yes, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, so 3A is approval of minutes for March 16th, 2023.
Need a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so next is we have the Order of Business. We just have a couple of changes to tonight's agenda. And they are all related to the discussion items. Item 12B, discussion regarding a whistleblower ordinance is deferred. Item 12C, discussion regarding procedures for commission absences and remote participation is deferred as well. And there was additional information for item 12D. And those are the changes for the agenda.
And then we're moving up?
And I'm so sorry, yes, we're moving up item 12D to after item 6A.
Okay. So this is normally a discussion item. We're gonna move it up to our agenda, but it is still a discussion item amongst the commission. Okay, so let's start with the special presentations. If you could just read that, Mauricio?
Yes, so...
Sorry, Mauricio, if, could I just set the record straight on?
Through the chair.
Mayor, may I just set the record straight on an issue from last month?
Wait, hold on, hold on. Let's go through this first and then we'll do that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay. So during the last month, Commissioner Viscara requested a proclamation be presented in honor of Autism Awareness Month. And then also during the past month, Mayor Svetchen requested a proclamation in honor of National Volunteer Month. And Vanessa, could you bring up the pictures? So these are the pictures. We had a brief, small ceremony on Tuesday. This is Joshua's heart. And the two students pictured there are residents of the city who fundraised and were able to raise $25,000 to assist Joshua's heart with the purchase of a refrigerator van. At that same meeting, which is item now 5C, the scholarship presentations, the city awarded scholarships to the following students: Angela Luca, Jasmine Parsons, Anna Fritkin, and Catalina Rodriguez.
Screens need to be moved, we can't see them.
And now we're on to 5D, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Is it possible to turn one of these towards us because we can't see?
The commission can't see the screens at all.
Jerry, hold on. Because we're gonna be presenting the parks?
Yes.
So we're not gonna be able to see, thank you. Well, we could see it really well now. Okay. All right, so we're on to item 5D then.
Yes, ma'am. So item 5D is a Parks and Recreation Master Plan presentation.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission? I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Joe Webb with AECOM, who has, I believe you all have met with him already, to discuss the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and he's here to give you an update. Great.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Joe Webb. I'm with AECOM. And as last we spoke or last I was here, we initiated the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. We've since been very busy. Susan keeping us to task. We are at about a midpoint in the program, so back together with you as body to kinda relay our findings and kind of a midpoint check-in. So thank you for your time tonight. Again, just as a reminder, our objective for this project, develop a comprehensive park system plan, really to look forward out to the next 10 years on how to provide parks, recreation, and cultural facilities throughout the city. Just as another reminder somewhat, you know, when we look at parks, it's more than just the places to play. We really see parks as a framework for building livable and sustainable communities. So when we, when we talk about parks, it's not just the park itself, but access to it, the sustainability with it, all of the quality of life things that comes with those parks. And here's a graphic of your beautiful city. And kind of what we consider the basis for great parks is, good park systems have great parks and great programs. I mean, you do. That's pretty obvious, just going out and looking at them. I don't think that's a surprise. But really, the great park systems of the world are transformative in that they address health and wellness, social equity, cultural, economic development, all of those factors. So it's really not just about places to play. It's really a broader image of parks and open space and recreation in our, in our city, in our community. So here we are, right in the middle. What we've been doing is really what I like to call the homework part or the where are we? Exploring is kind of our term for, we did research and analysis, or learning, and then the exploring is we've done a lot of public outreach, including meeting with each of you individually, also a lot of other means. But we like to stop here, meet with all of you, tell you what we've learned, and then we'll move on forward into where do we wanna be and how do we get there, which are very important next steps. So our initial findings, you know, going out and looking, I don't think, this is probably things many of you live and know every day, but you know, the city continues to grow. And it is growing, you know, pretty rapidly. It has. We put the images across the bottom. I mean, as I speak to my colleagues across the country and other places that remember Sunny House Beach 30 years ago, 20 years ago, and now we see it today. It's a big, big change, right? But there's also change in demographics. We're seeing a continue, continue increase in older adults, but also in young children and families. So kind of the atypical curve, which is supposed to be almost a straight line of younger to older. You're growing in older people and growing in younger people. So it's atypical. It probably isn't a surprise, but that's something as we plan ahead for parks and open space, you know, as a consideration. Increasingly diverse, I think that's a great thing. Really, an adaptation of people to alternative transportation. I mean, I sat outside of the school an hour before it opened and watched as the kids came and every mode of transportation possible, from walking to scooters to everything. So really, early adopters of that kind of transformative way of getting around the city. Again, loving parks, I won't read through all of these, but you have a good diversity of facilities out there. Quality, I mean, you see green, 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 green. This is, this is very atypical. I think it's the first time in my recollection that we've ever seen this. We use the Project for Public Spaces kind of their criteria for what makes a great park. And, you know, no question that going out, it's, it's pretty, pretty obvious. They're beautifully maintained, well-designed. I do think that there's the effectiveness question. You know, don't take that as a negative. It's an opportunity to do a little bit more. Are we actually providing the exact thing that meets everybody's needs? I think residents have told us there's a few other things. Access, you know, that's always a big issue. It's not just about the place, but also about getting there and how can we improve that? As we all see Collins Avenue and we see just getting around, it's a challenge. It's also a positive in that, you know, things are very walkable. And sustainability, we deal with this all throughout South Florida. You know, many times our park plans are done with resilience and sustainability plans. I know the city is doing a great deal in that regard too. But, you know, there's a natural symbiote between the two in how we can complement one another. Maybe a chance for, for more. Successes, high-quality parks, wide variety of recreation opportunities. You know, opportunities again to continue to work on the walkability. Seeing how crowded the sidewalks are, seeing the, a scooter going 15 miles an hour with a motorized bike going 25, and an older pedestrian on the same sidewalk. You know, that's a challenge. I will say, and just to broach the subject, I don't have the answer, but walking through Pelican Community Center, that was a facility that 20 years ago I used to hold up as an example, you know, of what, how they were to be designed and the flexibility of. I just have to say that I see it just so inundated with use and so difficult to adapt. I'll just put it forth as an opportunity, but I don't know how you're going to continue to renovate it and keep up with the growth that you're experiencing. You know, it's gonna almost have to shift. So I'll just plant that now, but hopefully we come back in the end. But wanted to put that forward. Improving sustainability, we deal with this all over in South Florida. I don't think I have to explain it too hard. I was speaking in Key Biscayne as the storms were falling last week, and people accused me of staging it. I did not stage 20 inches of rain, but we experience these things in South Florida and, you know, how we can better adapt to that and using the open space to help that. So. Activation of undeveloped sites, you know, you're fortunate. You know, you still have some, some things to do. So. Acres L O S, and I'll try and speed up here a little. I know you've got a full agenda. But level of service, of course, all, the city is pretty well-covered here. You do have the opportunity though. There's about six acres of property or six acres across four properties that might still have some opportunities. So we'll be looking at those as we move forward of what to do and what might be the, the best things to do. We had our public engagement, some of you were there. It certainly was, you know, we've gotten a lot of good input. We approach our public engagement, you know, really as open and transparent. It's the foundation for any kind of park system plan. It's really about hearing from people. This isn't my plan, it's not the city's plan. It's the people's plan of what, you know, where do they see their future, what are their needs, wants, and priorities? So we try really hard to not just say what everybody wants, but okay, then what do you want? What do you need? What's a priority? Kind of winnowing that through. So what we call a mixed methods approach. In other words, we try and use all kinds of different medias and methods to reach people in different ways. Some people are quick adapters to online. We had a virtual room. We had in-person public workshops. We met with focus groups. So, you know, really, I can quickly go through everything. But what we look for through that process is what boils to the top? What do we keep hearing over and over again? That validates that it's not just kind of a whim, but it's actually a consensus, if that makes sense. So from our virtual engagement, really 1,200 website visits, that's, that's really good. You know, you've got a lot of people that were aware of it. City staff did a great job pushing out, you know, information. We got a lot of good, good input from it. Walkability and park access, increased capacity of existing parks. I mean, it, it kinda started a theme, our community meetings. You know, somewhat similar, additional capacity again, improved bike and ped infrastructure. You're starting to pick up a theme. Our stakeholder interviews, it doesn't surprise me that I heard what you probably hear all the time from your constituents. You know, that's part of validating it. But, you know, when I'm hearing you tell me what you hear and I'm hearing it the same, I'm gonna take that as the truth, probably. So again, focus groups, a little more focused. I guess that's it, because we did talk to adults and seniors, middle school, high school, athletic parents, community leaders. So, you know, they tend to give a little sharper into their area and good content for, you know, what to do in the future. And again, our online survey, you know, again, lots of visits, lots of good things. We did hear some things about more aquatics. We did hear about, you know, a variety of different activities that can potentially be included. You know, the statistical survey, this is one where, it's the one we rely on the most because it's mixed. It's, it's the most assured to be a cross-section of everyone in the community statistically valid. And again, you know, great number of responses. We got 300 across the city. That makes for a good valid survey. And we heard water park. We heard walking paths, tennis courts, walking and running track. But when you put all these methods together, you know, what we look for and we put it in this chart of all the top things and all the different methods, we start to focus on what are the top facilities and top activities that people are looking for. So really, you know, there's a clear convergence. We're seeing where, through all those methods, we're kinda seeing what can be, what I would consider the priority of the community as, at least as they envision it today. So that will be the basis for our work. You know, as we move forward, what we've learned, you know, high density, increasing demand for recreation facilities, we know trends, you know, and we can see where the city's headed that's going to, you know, continue to be the challenge as you kind of make the flip from almost suburban to a little more dense or changes in modes of transportation. Increasing biking and walking and getting around is still a real priority. Strong desire for both city staff and public, improve existing parks, continue to do it. You know, I go all over the place and I see all kinds of ranges of quality. You guys are really high quality and people are saying it should be better. Well, I guess that's a compliment. But at least we're not here saying it's broken and it needs to be fixed. We're here saying it's good and we wanna make it better. You know, so that's, you know, that's not a bad thing. And connectivity again. So pools, interactive water features, splash pads, walking, biking, greater emphasis of at-will recreation. That's kind of a term, I'll throw that out as, you know, just as a trend nationally, we as a society are changing. You know, fixed programs at fixed time are kind of waning, and people like to do yoga, canoeing, kayaking, walking, biking, the things that they can do kind of at their own volition, at their will, at time. Even if it's a yoga class, you know, if you, if it's at 10 o'clock, you show up at 10:15, it's not a problem, right? It's not like a tea time. But that's a shift nationally. It's just reflective of kind of a change in American society. Increased capacity, you know, again, I brought a Pelican Community Center. You know, I don't, without a change, I don't know how you're gonna increase capacity. There's no little tweak. I can't say, oh, convert this closet and you're gonna have all your problems. But we'll talk more about that. Again, here we are, and with Susan's, you know, increased perseverance, we are right on schedule. We, we had said that we'd be done in August. We're gonna start our visioning process next week with your input from today and hopefully keep moving to get this, you know, completed on time. And, you know, I hope to be back here in August, again, giving you our final report. So with that, and I know I was a little quick, but any questions or comments, I'd love to hear.
Would you like to go first? Go ahead.
Yes, hi.
Yeah.
So, you know, I voiced to you before, my frustration with the intercoastal lot that we were, that was actually wrapped into the Parks and Recreation's plan when actually it had been separate, and I believe we could have had shovels in the ground already over there. But because it got wrapped into your, your programming now, we're delayed. So what is your feeling regarding that?
Well, I, I don't know if I have a direct comment on a specific facility. I do think that, you know, the desire for multi-purpose courts or tennis courts was reflected in what we saw. And I do think being careful with, you know, building the right things initially is important. So, you know, I gotta kinda trust this process to go through to hearing people's needs, developing a vision, and then an implementation. I know you're eager to do that one thing, but I also am a firm believer in being careful in steps.
Okay, so you don't believe that that property can be decoupled and we can begin on that property since it's been already a year in the works? That, I mean, we had a couple of discussions regarding it. It was unclear regarding, which I was not for shared purpose courts. I would like to see tennis courts and pickleball. And I believe there was a section added that there could be a half-court basketball court. But as far as the tennis, pickleball, I believe that was decided. Volleyball, we have on the beach, so we don't need volleyball there and also at Pelican Park.
So Vice Mayor, if I may, I think the purpose of this is just a presentation to have us discussing the presentation at hand. I understand, I understand what you're going, but I don't think that that's the question for him.
Well, my purpose is to decouple it so that we can begin construction.
Okay, I understand. But, but based on his presentation right now, do you have any questions? We can table that and speak that, to that separately because that's a conversation, I think, the city staff and with the city manager and the commission, not with the...
So let me just ask in a different way. Through your process, have you, do you have firm, a firm idea for the intercoastal property at this time?
No.
You still don't?
I have what people have said are their needs, wants, and priorities. What we will try to do next week is where is that? What will we build? What programs will we run? How will it be done? I know this is a burning issue, but, you know, I was asked to go, to do a thorough process. Now, to say this, one, you know, very honestly, as we've discussed, I think it's, it appears that there's a need for tennis. And I hear every place I go, pickleball is like one of the top priorities. But, you know, to take that out of the context of what we've been asked to do comprehensively as a master plan, it's difficult for me to say, yes, you should build that there here now.
Okay. Commissioner Stuyvesant?
Yeah, about that same area, that's supposed to be a green open space, not to have courts in there or parking. So that was designed in agreement with the developers back in the days for a green open space. So thank you for taking the time to make the right decision and to listen to everybody because I know there is some people who wants to do certain things there. But I think we should ask the people, what do they want there? And again, it was designed to be a green open space. Also, I do have a question. When you say reimagine Pelican Community Park to increase capacity, capacity in which regard? For after-school activities? For what kind of activities you are looking? What is the capacity that you need, that you see the need for?
I just, across lots of different things. I mean, honestly, you know, I was there early in the morning and I saw the place inundated. I was there midday in the school using, the band was, was practicing in the parking garage, you know. The place is just extremely busy. And to add to it now, you know, you've, you've converted little corners and you've changed little stuff to do it, but, you know, you need like twice as much. I don't know how you're gonna fit more. And considering especially that you're growing, you know, you're kind of at capacity. But I think the additional challenge is, I don't know how you'd ever take that place offline unless you had another place to put people and then brought them back. But that's just an observation, you know, just having been there several times, being there in the evenings. Like I said, I was there at 7:00 in the morning as kids were arriving.
Correct.
10:03 and, you know, 8:00 at night. But looking at it as an architect, landscape architect, I don't see how you're going to tweak another thing.
So the capacity for activities and programs, basically?
Yeah, and, and we do see across Florida, Coral Gables is looking at it too. They're having to, the War Memorial Youth Center, another, what we recall 20 years ago, it was the, this and this facility here and theirs was considered the best in the world. You know, but they just can't fit anymore stuff. There's too much demand. So, you know, you may have to look around at what, what people are doing to achieve that.
Or maybe just limit to residents only. That we were having that conversation early today. And right now also, the school board is working on, taking out, the kids that are coming outside from Sunny House. Our school is overcrowded. Right now, it's a cap in our school, so kids cannot register. So finally, the school board, we got the attention of the school board and we are working in probably eliminating or taking to the right school the children that don't belong to Sunny House. Because the kids that they are here in Sunny House cannot go to the school. So maybe we have to consider like the memberships that we were talking, that anybody can come to play in our PCP Pelican Park by just becoming a member. It doesn't matter where they live from in or outside Sunny House. So maybe there are ways that we can limit who is there without breaking any law, of course, and allowing properly, according to the grants and the money that we're getting for, for, for that. And the last thing is... And the last thing is an observation that you said that 40% of respondents utilize social media to obtain information on programs and services. I think that's very helpful because like we had also that conversation that maybe we have to advertise what we're doing maybe in different ways. And one, one maybe solution that is can be fast is text messages to send to specific focus groups, like to the seniors, et cetera, text messages about the programs that we're having. Because now everybody's in social media, I'm not in social media. So if that's the only way how we can get the information, I won't get it. So thank you for that. Same 40% utilize, get it from social media is like very important for us to move forward, how to, we disseminate the information.
And we see that number going up every year in all the places we work, but there's still a lot of people that don't. And so, and I think sometimes those are, you know, important to make sure that you're not excluding.
Of course.
You also do a real nice job of your brochures and other things.
Yeah, paper is good.
Maybe 20 years from now you can just be all electronic, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't make that shift now.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted quickly, because I see people are filling out cards, if I could just interrupt you for a minute. We are trying, in fact, we have been successful in keeping the meeting very, very tight with our, with our rules and, and the way that we address each other as, and as well as how the public addresses this body through the chair and when and how long people speak. So I just want to remind people that for the discussion items, we do not take any public speakers because this is something that we as a commission discuss and that item 12B has been removed off of the agenda. So if you're here to hear about 12B, we're not, we're not going to be discussing that today. Not you, not that, something else, yes. I saw your face, no, all right. Let them go and then Commissioner Lama, did you want to have any questions?
Yeah, I, I think that obviously we have to go through the process. I think the, the important part here is to get as much input from the residents to see what actually is needed and what they want to be able to obviously, let's say, reimagine our park system and reimagine not only our parks, but our open spaces too. So yeah, I think it's, it's crucial that we're getting as much input as possible and to continue to have these conversations. I know that, let's say, the homework portion of this has concluded and now we're going to the, to the next phase, but it'll be good, me as a, as a resident and also as a commissioner to, to maintain citizens informed, you know, of, of the process. Because there's always changes, there's always shifting needs, so that, that will be my only ask. Okay? Yeah, to keep them informed of how we're progressing along these lines, yeah.
And I think that's a very good point and probably something I didn't express clearly. You know, going forward, we're still listening. It's an open, transparent, inclusive process, trying to make sure that even as we move forward into implementation where we're doing cost estimates and, and things like that, you know, maybe people don't understand all of the, you know, math, but that it's open, it's right there, it's in the clear of, you know, how did we get to what we did? I mean, we, we have no other agenda than to take what people have told us and turn that into an actionable plan for you to vote on. You know, that's what we do.
Commissioner Viscar?
Are we done with the formal public engagement?
The needs, wants, and priorities part, listening to people tell us that what we want to do is transform that, you know, to everyone that, okay, so what does that mean? What do we have to build? What do we have to do? That part's still open, you know, that will still be transparent, but that's part of our professional responsibility to translate that into what do you have to build? What programs do you have to change? What things should you be considering in the future, so?
So there will be other public gatherings or, this is, this is basically what I'm trying to get to, like people who are just learning about this today? And they want, they have ideas and they want to share it. How should they do it?
Well, and for right now, we intentionally left it open through this meeting. So anybody that's here or anybody watching or is still interested, you know, we were to close it a few weeks ago, you know, we talked with Susan and really came, decided keep it open so that there's still chances for people to give input on the needs and wants. Now, as we move forward, there's still, you know, we're not in the closet, we're not in the dark here. It's to talk about things, but we need people, more tangible things to comment on now so that we have real things to be talking about. I think we've gotten the cross-section, it was a pretty extensive process. A lot of people did participate.
I, I understand that, it's just that there's, it's, it's not uncommon for us to go through a lot of trouble and only once we finish and we, and we lick that stamp, it's, it's, oh, but... And so for those people, I guess they should just contact us and we'll relay it to you? Is that, is there a website?
Absolutely.
If I may, okay, so we'll do two things. One, Leah is here and she has a little like business card with the link to the page.
Okay.
So if anybody wants that, Leah's here or she'll put them at the back of the room. And then Leah, we can send out a reminder through social media, email blast tomorrow to remind people like kind of this is still open, last chance. All right.
Can we, can we put it on the screen? Is it?
It is.
Is it one of those?
It's on the PowerPoint, right?
Wait, wait, yeah, I'm trying to go back.
Okay, you had a follow-up, you had a follow-up question?
Is there, can we actually put a cutoff date so we can move forward?
Yeah, and that was, that's tomorrow, the 21st.
Okay, so, so thank you, so we'll, we'll wait for you to put that so people can see the website right there, right?
Okay.
Okay, what else did I have for you? And I think I know the answer to this based on your comments, but if you had to identify like our greatest weakness or, or, or you label it opportunities, other people call it challenges. What, what's our greatest challenge?
Well, I think the connectivity thing is going to continue to be a challenge, you know, for parks and for almost everything. I do think that there is this idea of, you know, in some places, especially high-density places, you know, we'll, we'll have in our visioning workshop, Vancouver and San Diego and other places, you're going to have to shift to, might be multi-story. It might be different ways of trying to meet needs that aren't buy land, build a park, build a facility and get it done. Some, you know, it's, you're kind of in that urban shift to where it might have to be a different than what you've done in the past. So that might, that might be a little different.
Such as?
Commissioner Viscar has the floor.
Yeah, no, no, those are all my questions. I, I would, I would comment to the Vice Mayor's comment that I think, you know, we have an opportunity to look at everything at once and there's a saying, say like do it nice or do it twice. And we've had to do like the skate park over and we've had to redo things when we didn't have a formal process. So having the, I would favor the process and, you know, patience is a virtue.
Do you have a follow-up?
I was only going to say that when, when we're considering the intercoastal property on the south side of the city, we have developments around it. We have Point Sienna, we have Arlen House that have their own tennis courts. The people who are interested and when I was running for election, that emphasized to me emphatically that they have been waiting for years for tennis courts in Sunny Isles, which no one ever brought up until I ran for office. And people are waiting and waiting for shovels to get in the ground at the intercoastal area and to bring up now that that should be just a green park space when the developments surrounding that area have their tennis courts, their basketball courts for those community members, but the residents of the city who don't have such facilities are just waiting for public facilities to be constructed. And I, I believe, and I'll still continue to say it, that that property, if it had not been linked to our redo of our overall park system, we could have had shovels in the ground already.
Yes, please.
You don't need shovels if you put the tennis court under the causeway. Right now you have the space there.
That's a different area.
One second.
That's not happening for years.
Hold on. Commissioner Stigman has the floor.
So right now there is a space there, it's open, it's ready, you have the parking, you have everything set up in there. So like if that is the direction that is so needed, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying it's not needed, that is easy because we got it for the basketball as well. So right now we could give the direction or start working on the tennis court. You don't need shovels because it's ready for it. So we can have tennis courts in a short period of time if we do it in the north part of the Sunny Isles, which will be under the causeway. It's ready for it, so why not?
Okay.
That's untrue, that's years in the works.
Let's be respectful. All right, I want to say thank you. I, I wanted, for, for the record, I gave you a hard time. Because I, I wanted to make sure that, that as many people were heard as possible and I had questions about, you know, how could it be statistically valid when you only have 300 people respond? And so I appreciate your presentation, I think you did a good job and, and I appreciate that you're taking a holistic view of this and that we are going to be doing this in, in a way that makes sense for the entire city and not piecemeal. So just so that I'm clear, when exactly will the survey or input portion actually close down? Which, what's the?
Sunday.
So this Sunday is the last opportunity. So anyone that is listening or is going to hear this hopefully in the next few days, if you miss Sunday, you can always direct your questions or requests to, to the commission or, or the staff. You will still be heard, just not in that format. Okay?
And thank you, and I'm used to being booked a little bit.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for your time.
I, I have a, I have a request.
Okay.
Could we move 10H up for the sake of, I know we have a representative here from Alonzo Tracy Morning?
So here's, here's the thing, we have a few people that, that are waiting. So, and we have a zoning as well, so we can, I, I don't have any issue with that, but we've already moved something up as well. So if they don't mind going after what we've already moved?
That's fine, yeah.
All right, so, okay, next, next item, Mauricio? No, are we?
This is not an actionable, this is just a presentation.
Yeah, it was just a presentation. What, yes?
I would just like to please have the floor to correct one item from last month.
We already approved the minutes.
Yes, that's what I was waiting for. Now we have to correct something that occurred last month, if you don't mind.
From the, from the record?
From the record from last month, correct. So if you'll allow me, I'll be very quick and short and to the point. Okay, so last month, the mayor, in her incorrect speech regarding nepotism, stated that I myself selected my daughter and my wife to two committees, which was absolutely incorrect. And she also stated that it was against state law, which we will now, I will ask Valerie to please correct that issue as well. Is, is Sunny Isles exempt from being our population is below 30,000? Are we exempt from having family members on committees?
So Vice Mayor, this is an item that we have on the agenda, so I'm asking for you to wait until we get to that item?
Well, I'm just looking to correct the record from last month.
So why don't we do that when we get to that, to that item? Okay, if you don't mind? It's on the agenda, people are waiting, so let's, you, you specifically asked people to come who are also waiting, so let's get through the agenda in the order that we have it. Okay? All right.
I will ask that I have the right to please speak first?
I will absolutely give you the right to speak first, sure.
Okay, next item on the agenda is zoning 6A, which is a request of Poyo Operations for a site plan modification for exterior paint palette approval. So 17084 Collins Avenue.
Okay, I'm going to read the statement. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this evening's agenda has one zoning application. In these matters, the commission sits in a quasi judicial capacity. The decision of whether or not to approve a zoning variance is not a popularity contest, but must be based upon substantial competent evidence as it is presented tonight. If you intend to provide testimony on any zoning application, you must be sworn in by the city clerk and you should also fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. We will first hear from city staff and then from the applicant. After this, I will allow anyone from the audience who has been sworn in to provide testimony. The zoning applicant has the right to cross-examine any witness and for rebuttal. Please make your comments concisely. Mr. City Clerk, please read the zoning statements.
In accordance with the LDRs of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, all items to be heard today have been legally advertised in the newspaper, notices have been mailed and posted on the properties. Everyone wishing to speak, please raise your right arm to be sworn in if you will speak on this item. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Okay, and before we continue, are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. The zoning hearing on tonight's agenda is a site plan modification for the Poyo Tropicall exterior paint palette. This is application PZ 2023-01. The applicant is Poyo Operations and the site is located at 17084 Collins Avenue, which is a standalone building located in the larger Arcade Plaza located at 17070 Collins Avenue. On the screen here, the Arcade Plaza is highlighted, which is on the west side of Collins Avenue. And the Poyo Tropicall building is encircled and it has direct frontage onto Collins Avenue. The proposed exterior paint palette includes two colors that are not included in the city's permitted exterior colors, which are a cilantro green color and black fox. This is a photo of the structure today. The paint colors were permitted in 2011 and were consistent and are consistent with the city's approved color palette. And here's the proposed exterior paint palette. The primary color is a gray cream color and that is consistent with the city's approved paint palette. However, the trim color is a black fox and the accent stripe at the top is a cilantro green, which are not within the city's color palette. The top elevation, which is the east elevation, is the facade that's facing Collins Avenue. Staff has no objections to the proposed exterior paint palette inclusive of the two colors that are not in the city's approved paint palette, as long as the conditions listed in the staff report are accepted. I am available if you have any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Viscar?
No, I don't have any objection.
Commissioner Lama?
It looks like it would blend in well.
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
No, I agree.
That's understood? Okay, do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we do. Angel Gutierrez?
Hi, Angel, if you'd just say your name and an address for the record, please.
Sure, Angel Gutierrez, I'm the architect who works for Poyo Tropicall. I came up with the color spec, so I noticed that you guys don't have any objections, so that's great. So we can move forward with the renovations.
Okay, thank you. So I, I just wanted to ask Amy, it's for, for the purpose of the public so they understand what we're even talking about, why we have a color palette and, and why we need to approve this and how that usually works and whether we're going to be revisiting this, the palette, if you can just speak a little bit about that. Thank you.
So in the Code of Ordinances, chapter 150, it talks about the exterior coloring for structures in the city. So it doesn't include things like rooftops or trellises, but it includes all exterior facades of buildings, whether it's a single-family home all the way to a high-rise building, a school project, public parks, everything is subject to the color palette. The color palette was originally adopted in the original Code of Ordinances with the city and it's stated as a range of Sherwin-Williams colors. And we have those colors available in the zoning office for consumption. We commonly email them to applicants for review so that people can pick which colors they want to choose from. When any applicant would like to vary from those colors, it does need commission approval as the paint palette for the building.
Okay, thank you.
I actually have a question now that you, so I have to ask, why Sherwin? Are we, do we have to buy Sherwin-Williams paint?
No, no. No, no, absolutely not. So, it's actually in the code, it's listed as a reference.
Okay.
And the paint that is chosen by applicants must be harmonious and appropriate to the palette. But it's just a way so that we have...
It's a reference.
Yeah, to reference for the applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll take a motion. Second? Second from the Vice Mayor, this is a voice call. Roll call, sorry.
I'm sorry, could I just repeat for the record, who made the motion?
Commissioner Stuyvesant.
Perfect, and seconded by the Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Stuyvesant? Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
The application is approved 5 to 0.
Okay, so, this is where we're making a small change, and again, so that this is not confusing for the public. We have some people that have come to hear this item, so, in order to allow them to not stay here late and because they have school tomorrow, we're going to hear this item, the discussion that the Vice Mayor wanted to bring up. So, the floor is yours.
Okay, perfect. So, this is item...
12D.
12...
As in David.
D.
D like David, yes. So, recently, we had a meeting, Golden Beach had a meeting where they accepted a resolution and voted yes unanimously for a red light at Terracina Avenue and A1A. That is the entrance to Golden Gate, as well as the Golden Beach New Civic Center and Police Department. When you are exiting from Golden Gate, currently, you cannot make a left-hand turn. You have to go up two blocks and make an unsafe U-turn. That's always been absurd, in my opinion, and we're going to have that not be the occurrence for much longer. We're going, I'm hoping to have a resolution tonight to mimic Golden Beach's resolution and present both resolutions to Stacy Miller at FDOT for her to proceed with their, with the work they need to do to proceed with the red light at Terracina and A1A.
Okay. Commissioner Stuyvesant, do you want to ask any questions or add anything? Commissioner Viscara?
I really like the idea of collaborating. It's not often that we get to do that with our neighbors, and this is, this is, this is good, this is great. I mean, Golden Beach already did the heavy lifting, we're just doing the assist, and the lights, you know, are close together, but they're in different cities, but they impact both of us, so I think, I really like this.
Commissioner Lama?
Yeah, I think I agree with it too, yeah. I echo the same sentiments.
Okay. I was recently in Tallahassee and I met with FDOT, actually about this. Yeah, it was brought up because one of the residents, Joy, had called me, and so I said, how do we go about doing something like this? Because obviously, people have a lot of requests based on whatever they personally sometimes feel everybody needs because they need it. And their response was, if you have consensus from your residents and from your neighbors, we'll do a study and we'll look to see if this makes sense, and I think that we have that. We certainly have it from the commission, I believe, so I think the next steps would be to draft a resolution so that we can ask FDOT to consider doing the study for us.
Perfect, and the resolution should follow Golden Beach, where we're asking for synchronization of the light so that we don't have the new light in the future to be red while the light two blocks up to the south is, you know, they should coincide.
Absolutely, so, I don't disagree.
So, if there's consensus of the commission, we can prepare an after-the-fact resolution to that effect.
Okay. All right, so then, do we need to take, then we can vote now?
Just for the record, to keep in mind, just a motion to direct staff to formalize...
Formalize the resolution, okay, so can I get a motion?
I'm sorry.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, there we go.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so...
Thank you for everyone for showing up.
Thank you, and, yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your support.
Okay, so, Commissioner Lama made a request to move up an item. Which item is it that you wanted to move up?
So, it is, hold on, I lost my... It's, yeah, it's 10H.
So, you'd like to move up 10H, is there any objection? No? All right, so, if there was anyone that was planning to speak on 10H that has not filled out a speaker card, this is your opportunity to do that, this is regarding a resolution for approving monetary donation to ATM PTSA.
So...
Okay, just, I want to make sure, all right? We're good? All right.
Want to say a few words, Monica?
Let me read the title into the record.
Yeah, go ahead.
10H is a resolution approving monetary donation to the Morning Senior High PTSA in an amount that exceeds $750.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner Lama.
Yeah, just wanted to mention, Monica, would you like to say a few words? So, while you walk up, I'll, you know, this request came last year, it's been a long time in the making. I appreciate your patience, but basically, I think that, you know, this serves the public well a lot. A big percentage of our students go to ATM, and the way I see it is this is for the development and the betterment of our children, of our youth, so I wholeheartedly support something like this, and I think it will just make them better citizens, better people. Whenever you could support their, you know, aspirations and their goals, so, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words?
My name is Monica McKenzie, I'm the president of Morning PTSA, and I would like to thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, or the Commissioners for this donation, it's going to help a lot, and every amount helps us, like, improve our kids.
Well, we have to vote on it first, so, but yeah. So, it's not a slam dunk yet, but yeah, that's the intent, so, thank you for coming here, and I appreciate, yeah, and again, thank you for your patience, yeah.
Okay, one second, please. We don't have any public speakers?
Not for this item.
All right, did you want to speak first?
Yes, please, I have one question for you.
Yes.
So, how many cities do the students from Alonzo Morning, you know, have their residences? Or in how many cities would you presume?
Yes, would be Sunny Isles, Golden Beach, and North Miami.
North Miami.
North Miami Beach.
Okay, so, have any other cities contributed to the PTSA?
Golden Beach, not this past year, but like, all the previous years, they donated a large amount.
Okay, and North Miami?
No.
Why not?
Because they don't have a budget as strong as the other cities.
I see. Okay, well, maybe we can prod them to also make a donation, it's not a large amount.
The city was very open, we had meetings, but they said that last year, they couldn't donate because they didn't have in their budget, and they couldn't afford it.
I see. Okay, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Stuyvesant, do you have anything?
I believe that right now that we are working on the budget, and this should be an ongoing item annually. I think, I remember, we spoke about that last year, when we were talking about a budget, but it was kind of late. And I remember, correct me if I'm wrong, but Golden Beach, they used to give you how much, $5,000?
$5,000.
Yeah, $5,000 every year, correct. So, I should believe, this should be ongoing yearly to the school, to Alonzo Tracy Morning. I know the school very well, I'm also part of the PTSA, and I've been a mom of the school for the last four years, and I can only say good things about the programs and everything you guys do. Your main source of income is selling uniforms, right? Correct. Other than that, they are not doing like bake sales or whatever sales that we can do in other schools. So, and I know this helps a lot, and from my experience with the school, with Alonzo Tracy Morning, it's been just really good, and I trust you guys, what you're doing, and the product, I see the product, it's amazing product. So, I would like to move forward, not only to approve this donation, but as well as to make an ongoing yearly donation in our books, so we budget for it, and I would like to mimic what other municipalities are doing, so I would like to see and maybe consider every year donating $5,000 to Alonzo Tracy Morning.
If, I'm sorry, if I may, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that you were a member of the PTSA, and so I would recommend that you abstain from voting as a potential conflict.
You got it.
I apologize, I would have, had I known, I would have said it earlier.
I give disclosure for...
Thank you for letting us know, but... Commissioner Viscara?
So, I'm going to be the bad guy. We already, I know that the school and the PTSA are different, but with the Stop the Bleed Kids, we have the slippery slope issue, right, where we approved for one school, and then the next school came forward, and then the next school came forward, and we're, in the end, almost $40,000 that we gave for Stop the Bleed Kids, and I feel like that's a good give, and I'm okay for now. $750 is not a lot to ask, and for that reason, I think it's something that can be raised. I don't, I don't want to become a surrogate for multiple PTSAs, because that's what's going to happen. The next PTSA is going to come forward, there's at least three, right, because that's what happened with the Stop the Bleed Kids. So, and by the way, North Miami, I think, chipped in what, like a thousand dollars towards that? So, that's nice, but we were still out, well, it's between three schools, so whatever, even if it's $12,000 per school, or 14, or whatever, North Miami put in 1,000, so we still carried the brunt of that. And I really don't like the mixing of the PTSA and our budget at all, I don't like that idea at all. We saw in the, in the, what was it, Mayor, the volunteers, the thing that you, that presentation?
Volunteer Week Appreciation.
That appreciation thing, like, those kids raised...
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. It's raisable, you could probably poll the people in this room, if anybody's inclined to contribute and raise most of that money, so I don't, I think as far as giving to schools, we've done more than our share, and we were happy to do it, but I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, may I add something? So, obviously, we did contribute with the Stop the Bleed Kids, and I just wanted to point out that this request came well before the Stop the Bleed Kids. The reason why this was, let's say, it took forever is because supposedly, we had each of us, or as a commission, we had a certain money allocated that we could use for donations or some other purpose, right? And then, what happened is that when I went back to staff, they're like, no, well, we already gave the Stop the Bleed Kids. So, to be fair, this request came in well before, and for some reason, the Stop the Bleed Kids, obviously, is a safety, safety request, and safety is paramount, but not to take away from this request, which, in my opinion, should be more, but right now, it's 750, $750. But I think it's something for the development of our children, you know, it's going towards the media center, and I just want to be fair to them and be able to contribute, even if it's a small amount, to be able to contribute towards our students. Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm also going to be the bad guy. First of all, I want to thank you, Ms. McKenzie, for not lobbying me, because we, in full disclosure, we are friends. So, I appreciate that, I had no idea you were going to be up here, so this is awkward. But I agree with Commissioner Viscara, we have lots of PTSAs. PTSAs are nonprofits that are not necessarily associated with the school at all, and I believe that if a school is in need of something, they know how to go about, and I'm not directing my comments to you personally, I'm just saying in general, they have the district who should be able to meet those demands, and if we start handing out $750 here, then we, everyone's going to come out with their hands open. I think that that might, what might be more reasonable is what we've done with the Sunny Isles Beach PTSA, which is do some sort of in-kind, where we have allowed them to use, you know, the tents or the space for things that they were going to do for fundraising or whatever. But regrettably, and I understand there is a need, I do, because I know you, and I know how hard you all work, and I, you know, I've been on PTSA myself, so I know that you really need this, but I also believe that there's other ways to raise it, and I think that perhaps we can, you know, talk about that, how we can help facilitate that for you, but start handing out money, then there is no end. Because our kids in Sunny Isles Beach go to a lot of schools, and I'm a member of four different PTAs, so, yeah.
May I add something?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just don't see it as handing out money, I see it as an investment in our youth, and this is a small amount. I purposely put this amount so we could be considerate, and also, we could be mindful of what we're donating. I know that the Stop the Bleed Kids, the price, obviously, it's a lot higher than this, but just want you to think about it, and perhaps we could bring it back if this doesn't pass today. But yeah, I see it differently, I see it as a big percentage of our kids, and even surrounding communities, you know, we're investing in, basically, I don't want to be cliche, but the future of this area, of this community, so, that's how I see it. I know we're not going to be handing out money, but, you know, there's certain occasions where, you know, you got to look at the actual situation, and you got to say, okay, you know what, this money's going for a good cause, so, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree, I support PTA and its mission personally, and I have for many years, but it has to suit a municipal purpose, and, you know, we talked about this earlier during our budget meeting, where we're trying to really be very mindful of where we are focusing our efforts so that they are specific force the residents of Sunny Isles Beach, because ultimately, this is their money, this isn't our money to give out, it needs to have a municipal purpose. So, I would be very happy to personally make a donation to you and to help you raise funds, but I am against using taxpayer dollars for that.
I'm sorry, and if I may, wait, before you continue, Commissioner, because you do have a conflict, I would recommend that you not speak on this item, and in fact, technically, under the Miami State County Code of Ethics, you have to excuse yourself from chambers during the discussions. And also, I would also remind you, pursuant to the charter, any charitable donation requires the affirmative vote of four members. So, it's not just a majority vote, it requires four. I'm reading the tea leaves.
So, I understand that, but with that, I guess we'll still take a motion?
Well, I would like to say something.
Please, go ahead, all right?
These PTAs, they used to raise funds with car washes and things, correct?
Not in our school, now it's cool, the PTA only sells the uniforms, and all the income comes from the sales of the uniforms.
I see, but...
And, but we accept donations, we have the fund that is the WOLF Giving, that is only used, this fund is only used to improve the school.
Okay.
So, we are improving the media center, so we got the nations to improve the media center, and with the new technology, the older kids are only use laptops for many course, online courses. We are trying to renovate the media center, change all the furnitures, there is more comfortable for the kids, more laptop-friendly use.
No, I understand, so that's basically, but those funds would normally come from the county or a developer, maybe, that is looking to make a donation, friendly developer, or...
Yes, if we have developers, we accept any kind of donations. But we've tried many times, and from parents, we request from parents, and it's very hard.
Yeah, but some PTAs, if I'm not mistaken, they have school dunking parties, and they have car washes and things like that to raise funds, right? and they have car washes and things like that to raise funds, right? Just your school does not do that?
We do not do that.
Right, but others might, all right?
Probably, yes.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate it.
Okay, so, and, and for the record, I, I know that this PTSA works very, very hard. But, so, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. Well, if you ever do decide to have a car wash or something, I'm happy to be there to support you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I just want, wanna make sure, 'cause now, obviously, we're learning that-
Yes.
Commissioner Stupisant was a member of the PTSA. If there's any other conflicts or potential conflicts that either yourself, or your spouses, or you believe that there's some can either directly or indirectly benefit from this vote, again, advising you to please abstain, declare your conflict.
Commissioner Lam? Isn't your wife on the PTSA?
Yes. On the PTA.
Yes.
I've done-
So, there's not enough votes?
Yeah.
Then we don't have four.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, just because you could indirectly benefit from it.
So, then, we, we don't have four votes.
Yeah, so without a motion or a second, then the item would just fail.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make you a donation, Monica.
Thank you for coming out. Okay.
Somebody should invite Commissioners Stupisant back.
Okay, so, are we gonna?
Don't she go? Can someone get Commissioner Stivison, please?
Oh, she just left the building.
Okay. Okay, so, we're back on the agenda. Again, just a friendly reminder, please, if you would like to fill out a speaking card, this is your last opportunity to do that. We are on ordinances for first reading, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
So, 7A is an ordinance amending Section 74-8, titled Standing Committees, Chairpersons of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Isles Beach. So, revise the title and references. I'm so sorry, Mayor, this item is, the title isn't correct. If you'd just give me one second, let me just pull up the correct one.
All right, while you do that, I'm gonna use the rest.
Thank you. And Mr. City Clerk, before we get started on this item, I would like to correct the, the agenda from last month regarding-
Okay, that'll be through-
Nepotism issue.
Through the mayor. Ready? Okay. So, 7A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, repealing Section 74-8, titled Standing Committees, Chairpersons of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, and creating a new Section 74-8, titled Advisory Boards and Committees, thereby establishing regulations and procedures governing appointive advisory boards and committees, and providing for uniform advisory and committee membership requirements and procedures. Repealing Section 74-9, titled City Boards and Agencies, Providing for repealer, Providing for severability, Providing for codification, and then effectiveness.
Okay. Now, here?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Alan Buelo, Deputy City Attorney. If you recall, the last commission meeting, our office had proffered a proposed amendment to Section 78-4, with some repeated references to standing committees, which has created some confusion with regards to your charter and your code of ordinances. Born of that item or discussions amongst you, with a variety of things potentially to add to our code with regards to advisory boards and committees. So, in that effort, and having heard those comments, we went forward and drafted a new ordinance, which repeals essentially the previous version, and replaces it with this new version, which tries to encompass the variety of items that you've brought forward as, as potential. Again, this section only addresses advisory boards and committees, not standing committees, as those are governed by your charter. And I'll preface my statements in summary, that any of the items that are within the ordinance are obviously up to you with regards to whether you wanna keep them in or keep them out. This is merely a suggestion based on best practices through a variety of jurisdictions that we reviewed. Madam Mayor, if you'd like me, I can go through and give a short summary. The new ordinance retains an application process. We did, based again on your discussions, add a residency requirement, where to participate in the code, you'd have to be a resident of no less than six months. However, non-residents who own property, own a business, or serve as an officer, director, or manager of a business could also participate, where they're not residents. As is typical in a lot of jurisdictions, we, there's a prohibition from a city employee serving on an advisory board or committee. No relatives of elected officials, no relatives of any other board members on that particular committee. So, no two family members should serve on the same board, because that creates some potential sunshine issues. And no simultaneous service, where once you're serving on one board, you should not serve on another until your term for that particular board is over. At the commission's direction, we made the membership uniform throughout to seven members, unless otherwise provided, of course, in the enabling legislation. As is currently written, the mayor would appoint the chair to each committee or board, and then, the majority of the board would select, or committee, would select a vice chair. Again, that can be changed, but that's how it's currently drafted. There was discussion on the terms and commencement of terms. We left them at one year, commencing January 1st through December 31st. There had been some discussions, if you recall, with regards to possibly having that term coincide with the fiscal year, starting October 1st. We didn't feel it was a consensus amongst you on that, so we left it as is. But of course, that is subject to what you would all like to do. We did identify a potential problem on election years, when there's maybe a potential change of elected officials, where an appointment would have occurred October 1st, and then, all of a sudden, you know, a month later, you have another election, and that may create some issues there. We did include six consecutive term, twenty-year terms, so the limit would be six years altogether. With regards to removal of absences, that would be, of course, by a majority of the City Commission. Right now, it's drafted as three consecutive, non-excused absences, and we've gone ahead and identified what excused absences would be. Common sense, things such as illness, family emergencies, legal obligations, as well as anything that the chair of the board would deem to be appropriate, as circumstances are unpredictable. Obviously, if there is violations of any ethical codes or sunshine law, that could subject a member to removal. Or if, obviously, a member files qualification papers to run for office, that would also disqualify them. Otherwise than that, there's provisions for voting, agendas, minutes, things of that sort, scheduling. And lastly, you had all discussed the possibility of City Commission liaisons, where there's a provision now written in there, where you all, as a majority of the commission, could appoint a commissioner to be the liaison for particular boards. And I'm available for questions.
Okay. Nice, Mayor, you wanted to speak first?
Yes. First, I would, since the record was created last month incorrectly, I'd like to address that right now and have it corrected. Mayor Svetchen had used the podium to state that my, I had nominated my wife and daughter to committees, which was absolutely incorrect, stating that that was nepotism, which went against state law, which is also incorrect. I would like to ask Valerie to please point out the state exemption for Sunny Isles being that our population is below 30,000.
The Florida statute that governs is 112.3135, which provides that generally, in most cities, you cannot appoint somebody that is a relative. However, there is an exemption for municipalities with populations less than 35,000. So, the City of Sunny Isles falls within that exemption.
And we have how many, approximately?
Twenty.
Two, 22,000?
About 20, yeah, 20, 20, 24.
Okay. So, we're well below. Yes. So, and seeing that, we don't have a lot of participation in a lot of our committees, and also, even as far as for our parks, you know, and recreation review, yes, study, we did not have much in the way of feedback, which was quite sad. We had formal openings, which very few people attended. So, when you have responsible people who happen to be residents who love the city, and because a family member happens to be a commissioner, that should not, and the state legislature and their wisdom sought it to, thought it not to be an issue, and I believe that that should not be changed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have any public speaker?
Yes, we do. Norman Edelkopf.
Norman Edelkopf, 244 Atlantic Isle, Sunny Isles Beach, Florida. Former Mayor of the City of Sunny Isles Beach. In answer to some comments made by the Vice Mayor, I'd like to go back to the history of Sunny Isles Beach up until today, or maybe a year or two ago. For the last 23, 24 years, the City Commission has always refrained from appointing any of the members' families onto any commission or committee that was being established. There's only been one relative of a later-elected official that served on a committee. That happened to be Bud Scholl's wife, who served on the Historic Board. But when she was appointed on that Historic Board, Bud Scholl was not a commissioner or was not the mayor. So, she happened to be on during his time, which followed my tenure in office. But again, no commissioner, no mayor, no Vice Mayor has ever appointed a family member. The idea of having these committees was to get more participation from the public. Also, any commissioner that has a family member that is interested in making comments certainly has the ear of their spouse, or their father or mother, depending upon who we're talking about. So, they're not prohibited from giving that advice, information, or whatever help that they want to give through the voice of the commissioner that's here. So, I really believe that it's a total mistake and a not best practices, even though the Vice Mayor claims an exemption. An exemption doesn't mean that that makes it best practice. If it was best practice, they wouldn't have set the $35,000, $35,000 member limit. It's my turn to talk. You can talk afterwards.
That's fine.
So, I, I just think that it's bad form, not best practice, showing disrespect to the other members of this community, that, and you indicated also that people didn't wanna join these committees. Maybe the reason why is because they feel it's a closed door, and if you're not a relative or friend of somebody on the commission, you won't be appointed. So, why bother? That may be exactly what you would like to have happen, but I think that's the wrong decision for this commission to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One, one second, one second. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, ma'am. Jody Joseph.
May I just correct the former-
We're, we're not gonna be debating with the public. They're, they say their piece, and then, we have a conversation. We're gonna go back and forth.
Hi, Jody Joseph, 18560 North Bay Road. Very interesting. Everybody has their own input. But I will say, on the Charter Committee, I wanna make it very clear, Mauricio, if you don't mind, can you please indicate and make it very clear for everyone, including what happened last month? And I was very disheartened with what you said, Larissa, about myself and my child. Please make it clear that my husband did not, we're talking about appointing. Who appointed me? I know you're very proficient at your job, so if you could do that while I continue my speech, I'd appreciate it.
So, yeah, we're not gonna go back and forth, so you have your time to speak, and then-
Okay.
And then, we're not gonna go back and forth. Go ahead and speak.
But if I may say, you said so yourself at least 10 times, to be polite, and courteous, and right, and you actually spewed untruths last month, which is terrible, because Mauricio will verify the fact that my husband did not appoint me. He would never appoint me. I'm a business owner, I'm a working woman. I don't need him to appoint me to anything. I ran, thankfully, I'll answer the question, and you could verify it, Dana Goldman, well, actually nominated me, and had nothing-
Okay, let's, let's keep this, we have decorum here, so please, your time is gonna run out if, if we keep interrupting you.
Well, I appreciate the same courtesy as you give to your friends up here. So, if I just may continue, it's very important to know that my husband did not appoint me. I don't need him to appoint me to anything. I ran, I've been in this city forever, I'm involved. To be fair, I've been to more outings and more occasions than you have. The Veterans Day Parade, the human trafficking. So, I think it's fair to say that for me to wanna be involved, which I have been for years, to take that away from a resident, and what you said about why people don't wanna run, maybe they don't wanna run to be chastised by a mayor, and then to bully my daughter as well, that was actually shameful. And I think people know that I worked very hard on charter. That was not right. I showed up early to every meeting, and I worked hard, and I knew what I was talking about. And I'm sorry that bothers you, Larissa, but obviously, it got under your skin, because not only did you give everyone that lecture last month, and everyone heard it on TV as well, but then, you brought my daughter into it. And my daughter, who's been involved as well with everything, has nothing to do with her father. You made her sound like really a stupid child that couldn't get anywhere without her father, which is absolutely, anyone that knows her, the absolute contrary. But, you know, but that's not right, what you did. I really think that you owe myself and my daughter an apology, and the residents for using, for using the dais, and, and saying things that are absolutely dishonest. And the ESAC as well, let me reiterate. Were you able to find out who nominated, and did Jerry nominate me for the ESAC?
It's through the, the Mayor Jody.
Okay, pardon me. It's Henry Strong. Also, quickly, if I may say this, I'm well aware of the statute as well. So, he did not nominate me, someone else did. And quickly, I have a quick question, since we're talking about nepotism, which you brought up on several occasions, Larissa. Did you happen to go, or anybody, and I know you could answer this if you choose, to be honest?
Please, please, your time is up.
I'll be, just give me the same respect and courtesy that you do for everyone else.
You're getting exactly the same courtesy. Please finish your statement.
I, I will. Did you happen to ever take a trip to a sister city, anywhere, Jennifer?
Okay, all questions are directed through the chair.
We're not supposed to engage.
This is through the chair.
Whoever did, I, I know, I believe, I don't think anyone else did, but I believe you did, which cost taxpayers a lot of money, I think it was, I'm not sure, China or South Korea.
Thank you.
And I believe you took a family member, which taxpayers paid for. What I did, I did my own time, and my daughter.
Thank you. Thank you, your time is up.
Nepotism is nepotism, but that's the truth.
Thank you.
So, when you say something, please be very careful.
Thank you, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Did you wanna add anything, Madam Mayor? Or could we let other people on the commission speak?
No, I believe the record is complete.
Yes, you spoke. Commissioner Stivison? Okay. Commissioner Viscara?
Yes, I had some, some comments. Just give me one second, because my screen closed up on me. Okay, so, the first, the nepotism was the first thing on my list. It's, but I can't find it now. Like, what, what page is it on? Is it on page four of eight?
Let me find it for you.
But anyway, it says relative, but it's-
Right.
But anyway, it says relative, but it's, it's, that's very broad. So, if it's my cousin, if it's, I mean, it could be somebody who doesn't like me but has the great misfortune of being related to me, then they can't, they can't participate.
It's defined.
It's defined in, so, I mean, to the extent that you're agreeable with the definition, but it's defined as any father, mother, son, daughter.
What page are you on?
I'm sorry. Page three, under the definitions.
Okay, thank you.
Says relatives means any father, mother, son, daughter, husband, wife, brother, sister, father-in-law, mother-in-law, son-in-law, or daughter-in-law.
Okay. So, that, that's number one. Secondly, I, 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 I do think that the state statute exists for a reason. And, I mean, I, I'm in favor of, of just leaving this out. And to use Jody as an example, she did use, do an excellent job on the CRC. So, I think if it ain't broke, don't fix it, and we can all decide on our own. As I mentioned last month, you know, if, in regards to, to my child, I'm like, I'd rather him sit in the other chairs, and he can participate that way. But that's an internal family decision that we make, because then we, we put our children in the, in the, in the tougher spot, not just because, oh, they have, they, we will hear them, the city will hear them, but then they don't have opportunities to build their little resumes as they, as they, as other children would, you know, when they prepare for, applying for school-related things. So, I think that should be more of a, of an internal decision within the family, and I wouldn't want to impose, just because I, I would advise my child to sit in the other chairs, you know, not the, not the board chairs. I wouldn't want to impose that on everybody else, because everybody has their goals. So, I think the nepotism language should just be left out altogether. Then, in the definition of, I have it here as 2F, the words describing, but I, can somebody help me with the pages, because I'm not good with the?
Page five.
Thank you. 2F, right. It, it's talking about the qualifications of the, of the board members. It says, shall possess sufficient knowledge, experience, judgment, or background necessary to competently serve. It's like, I don't even know how to gauge sufficient knowledge. Like, I, I don't know. But, and I would add, oh, no, so we leave, leave that there. I, I wouldn't know how to gauge sufficient knowledge and, and judgment. How do we, as a, as a commission, evaluate judgment? Let's see, my other one. Number four, the appointment of the members, again, using the CRC as, as an example. I really liked, I've never been in that position. I really liked that, that the board chose its own chair. We found that to be very productive. It, I think it gave the group like a sense of empowerment, and it turned out to work out really well. So, I would, I would suggest that. And about the terms, so if they start in January, I know we talked about this, but we also talked about the, with regards to the, the budget schedule, but that's, but I guess that was when we create the committees, right, not the appointments. Do you guys remember? We went back and forth, can somebody chime in on that?
Wait, can you clarify your question?
Do you remember that we, we talked about, we, we, we want to discuss committees around the budget, because if we, we want to be able to budget for them. But then, we talked about when the appointments would be made, or when they would be, and I got a little lost in the weeds about that.
What we discussed was, in order to not take away from this current appointment, to somehow have a bridge, where if we were going to change it to fiscal year, that they would ultimately then be appointed for the following year as well. So, they would in effect get an extended term. But what legal has been saying, which they've asked, now asking for us to give input on, is if we change to a fiscal year, which if there are budgetary implications, such as the environmental committee that, for instance, wanted to have the grant process, then if there's an election, someone is appointed, and in the following month, there may be a new person in that seat. So, that was the conversation.
Okay. So, then it's better to leave it so we can decide, let's say, right, like October, we will continue with these committees. They're funded. But then, we don't make the appointments until December. They start in January. Right?
As written. That, that's how it's currently written.
That's okay. Okay. And what else? And on 8E, which my screen went blank again, it, when it talks about disqualifying, disqualifying members, eight, failing to attend, I'm on page six, at the top of page six, failing to attend, violating of the ethics code. And I, I would add to that also, providing false information. Like, if you're providing false information to, to qualify for the committee, I would find that grounds for having you removed as well. And where is the, I didn't see the commissioner liaison language, but I thought that worked well for the CRC as well.
That's on page seven F.
Thank you. Seven. Got it. Sorry, I have to make everything bigger. So, I thought that worked out really well with the CRC. Again, it was the first time experiencing that, and I thought it was helpful for the members. And I, I was super happy with the CRC experience, and I think that would, that's a model that we should extend to the other committees. And I think that's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Lama?
Okay, regarding, I think we should have a conversation regarding the nepotism. Obviously, you know, I think that if we extend an opportunity to the residents, I think every resident, perhaps, I'm not sure about this, I'm divided, perhaps even family members, like Commissioner Viscara said, why would, let's say, our children or your children be excluded from perhaps participating, and especially if there's not a lot of, let's say, applicants? In the case of the youth committee, I think there was only eight applicants, I believe. So, perhaps we should-
We had more applicants than, than appointments.
It, it was seven members, right? It's seven-member committee. So, I think there was eight applicants. Yeah. So, yeah, I remember, I remember that. So, I think we should probably hash this out a little bit more. On the other hand, I, I also understand, you know, the nepotism, because if we had, let's say, not us, but a commission that's not, not well-intentioned, or perhaps some members are, you could find the city with a committee full of family members. So, obviously, we want to avoid that as well, because we do want to invite other residents to have that opportunity and to be able to see it as something that is, is inclusive, is not clicky, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm a little divided. I don't know if the language should be strengthened, if there should be some conditions set. I, I, I don't know. Maybe a family member can come in if there's not enough applicants. I don't know. These are just ideas that I'm throwing out there.
If I, if I may-
Yes, please, go ahead.
I skipped two, two things that I, that I meant, I missed in my notes. And when it comes to the youth advisory committee, I, I agree that, that we should be looking at, I like the residency requirement, but kids sometimes have two homes. So, I think at least one of, you know, for the, for the youth, we need to consider that at least one of their parents lives in, in Sunny Isles Beach, even if it's not the majority, where they live the majority of the time. Like, we don't want to be digging into those details, but at least one of their parents should live there. And what's the other thing? Right. Regarding the, I don't know who mentioned, oh, only the people's friends can be on the committees. That's why we now are using the, the broader application, the online application process. Actually, it used to be, like, when, when I was in the CAC, I didn't know that existed. It, it, it was, it existed, and it stopped getting used, and it became exactly that. Like, who do the commissioners know? And then, that's who, who was being placed in committees. But now that we, that we publish the, the application process, and you can do it online, it actually made it broader. And I think, and still, we don't, we don't have a mountain of, of applicants. So, I mean, efforts were made to remove the, the buddy system, and, and it's still a work in process, but I don't, I don't think we're at a place right now where we should be minimizing who can apply, because even though we did get more than the minimum, it wasn't that much more. So, that's all.
Commissioner Stavison?
I have like three amendments, very similar to what we're talking about. One of them is to C, to strike out the thing about the relative. I don't believe our family members, they should be punished because we decide to run for office. That's exactly what's happening here, and I don't like that. They should not. They should have the same opportunity like every other resident. So, to B, to C, I'm sorry, I think should be left out. Also, for in the appointment of members in chairperson, I, I think as well that it worked very good, like you guys did in the charter review. And the, the members, they should be the ones deciding who's going to be their chairperson and the vice-chairperson. So, that's for four. And also for eight, for eight, I think we should add, yes, about false information should disqualify you, and also now being able to abide to the decorum rules. So, whoever can behave, I don't think should be part of a committee. So, those are my three amendments. With those three amendments, I will be okay to make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I, may I add something?
Please.
Yeah, I, I agree with a couple of points. Obviously, false information. And then, perhaps having the committee vote on who their chair is going to be, I think it will empower them. And I think it just, you know, tells them, we trust you to choose who's going to be your chair and who's going to kind of lead them, let's say. So, I, I agree with those. I think it'll be a good, you know, vote of confidence for, for, for those committee members. We, as a commission, have chosen for, to let them vote and choose who their leader's going to be.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I also would like to add that I believe that the commission, the commission should vote for the liaison, the commissioner liaison for each committee.
That's how.
That's in there.
It's currently written as such.
So, okay. So, I'm going to provide a little bit more context and historical. I'm going to add to what the, the previous mayor had, had said. We have had these committees, or we've had a, a committee, not these, but we had the historical committee, and I'm assuming just for clarification, it is not included in this, because that's a different kind of committee, correct? Okay. Then, we had the, the Citizens Advisory Committee, and we did not use that form. In fact, I don't think any of us knew there was a form there. And it was very much about appointing those people that seemed like they were the most active in the community. So, if you were the person that came to a lot of commission meetings, if, if you spoke to a lot of commissioners, if you attended a lot of events, you were generally considered a person that would be interested and would like to attend and participate in these committees, and that's how they were appointed. It was also a time where not a lot of people were coming and, and participating. I, I like that we have a lot more people participating. So, to your point about appointing family members, if we didn't have enough people, then I would say, all right, well, perhaps we should open it up to family members. If we didn't have enough people, perhaps we don't need that committee at all, because the idea of these committees is because the public wants to participate. With, with that said, during this process, I, I feel very strongly against including not only, not only family members, but also close friends, because I will tell you that it's, our family and our acquaintances and our friends have access to us, have access to the staff, have, have so many more opportunities. They are in no way punished by not being able to join these committees. In fact, it's the complete opposite, because even with this, I specifically told people, I said to the kids, I said, did you know this is happening? So, I reached out to kids that I knew. So, right there and then, it already shows that they're, just by knowing me, or me knowing their parents, they already had, they had something that other members of the community didn't have. And so, I think we have to be really mindful of the fact that we serve the entire community, and it is irresponsible for us to say that in some way our families would be hurting or not given the same opportunity. When we stand up and decide to run for office, we are given an incredible amount of responsibility. We are tasked with representing the entire community, and as we all know, especially, you know, all of us that have run in elections, your family takes quite the beating, as do you, and you sign up for that. And at no point have I ever felt that my family has, has in any way not been able to participate when they wanted to. In fact, I have like a little mini committee at home, constantly telling me what they'd like to see in the city. So, for me, if we only had seven people apply, and we only have seven positions, and all seven of those people happen to be our kids, then so be it, if that's what we agree on. But to, to, to say that, that in, in some way, we would not be allowing our own family members an opportunity, is this ingenuous? Our family members have a lot of opportunities, and they continue to have those opportunities. So, with, with that being said, I feel very strongly about that portion of, of the, of the ordinance. I, as far as the liaison, I, I'm, I'm the one that supported that. That's something that we did also when we had the Public Arts Committee, that worked out very well, because it's important to have someone from the commission on the committee to help guide them, so that they're not going off on a tangent and potentially having discussions about items that would never happen, because they're outside the budget. So, that one, I'm, I'm very supportive of. I think I made my case. So, with that, how should we proceed as far as making changes, or?
I think we have consensus with regards to the nepotism, if I count correctly, that that should be removed. With regards to chairperson being selected by the, the committee or the board, that seems to be also agreed upon. With regards to the youth committee, good point. With regards to residency, if you all agree to add a qualifier that is for that particular board, that at least one parent reside in the city, if that's something, that's good. Okay. I think we're agreed upon providing false information to be a disqualifier, as well as not abiding by rules of decorum, if that's correct. And then, the one-point commissioner with regards to that one qualifier for position, possessing sufficient knowledge and et cetera, if that's something that you all agree to remove, that that's fine.
I don't know how strongly-
Wait, wait, one person at a time.
I, I don't know how strongly I feel about it. I just found it, I, I was just throwing it out there, because, I mean, these are specialized boards, but, I mean, at least the ones that we've been dealing with. But you want people with like environmental backgrounds to be in the environmental committee, and, but not, you may not get, you may not have the pool. You may not have, you know, so, so then we don't, then we, then we don't create the committee, because we don't have enough. I just found it, I don't know.
And keeping in mind also that when you have enabling legislation for your particular boards, we can have those particular unique qualifiers in there. So, if there is a certain requisite amount of experience that's needed for a particular board, we can do that in the enabling legislation rather than in this one. So, if you want to remove it here, or just say that, you know, clear it out, because your, your point's fair with regards to judgment.
But, but, I don't know.
I, I think-
I don't think it makes a difference either.
We're, we're not checking it, so someone could say they have any sort of experience that they want to say ultimately. I think that what we want to probably see are people that are genuinely interested in that topic, and so that they somehow are giving us an indication that, yes, I don't just want to join a committee for the sake of joining a committee. Is, you know, could we put that sort of language where a genuine interest, I think it's actually already in here?
But again, how do you gauge that? But again, how do you gauge that?
Well, you, you ask that, you know, when, in, when you're putting in the form, there is an area there, um, that asks you to explain why you'd like to join that committee.
If I'm, if I may, so.
I think we leave it alone. I think we're, we're digging a hole for nothing. And that I opened up, okay, fair enough, but, but I think we did.
No, I don't wanna belabor a point, but going to Alan's point as to when you do the enabling legislation, you put those qualifications in there. I'm gonna give an example for the environmental sustainability for ESAC. The qualifications that we put in that ordinance was, um, they shall take into consideration a candidate's education, technical, professional experience, candidate's professional degrees in training, engineering, architecture, planning. I'm sorry, this is for the MAPSAC from mobility safety. And then it further provided that those qualifications were encouraged, however, laypersons with an interest in mobility safety will be considered, they have at least a basic knowledge.
Okay, so yeah, it's broad enough to allow for a committee to be filled. But you may not necessarily, if you're looking for, for people with that expertise, you may not have enough people for a committee. For that specific expertise, it may be hard to fill a committee.
So, so here's the thing, I, I had asked this question before when we were, when we were talking, um, with, with, um, the city attorney and, uh, this is something that we can revise as things happen. So when we see that something is a problem or something needs to be changed, we can revise it at any, at any point. Um, and, you know, to your point, Commissioner Lama, where you said, okay, other commissions that don't necessarily have good intentions, but of course we, every commission assumes they have good intentions. Um, you know, these, these are things that can be changed as we go along. I don't think that us putting in those kinds of, that kind of language right now, uh, really matters since we have more than enough applicants.
So I, I, I think we've covered everything. I did have one question with regards to disqualifications. There is a sentence in there with regards to absences and it says consecutive. So do you want consecutive three absences or they can be separate?
I, I would recommend separate because they have a very limited amount of time and if they're not able to attend the, the meetings, then they shouldn't be on the committee. Does anyone have any objection to that?
No. Now, the, I, I couldn't, sorry, uh, I couldn't hear you. Did you say unexcused or excused?
Unexcused, unexcused absences.
Unexcused, so if they bring a doctor's note, they're good.
Right.
And can, can they, can they attend, um, on the phone? Can, do we have that option for committees?
So I, I would recommend against it because to me, again, if, if you're signed up to volunteer and you, you're making that commitment, then you should make that commitment and it, and to respect everyone's time, otherwise you're gonna get seven people on the phone.
Right.
But from experience, I can also tell you that sometimes people are stuck in traffic and then we don't have quorum. And then staff has stayed, people have, have shown up.
Well, I think that's where we start looking to see whether it makes sense to continue that committee and that's, you know, this is how things, you know, we, we figure it out. I think that trying to work in right now excuses for people not to be there on time or not to show up, we're giving them a crutch to, to do that. So we're, we are, we have all said that these people are very dedicated, they're very devoted, they really wanna do this, so they need to leave a little bit early if they wanna not get stuck in traffic.
I don't disagree, I was always there on time.
Yes, you were.
But I also had occasions with no quorum.
Right.
But quorum, quorum would have to be physical in any of that.
Oh, that's true.
Yes, I'd just like to say.
One, one second, Vice Mayor.
That's true, but maybe we can say, again, because life happens, uh, maybe you can say, you know, no more than one person remote or something so that you have, I'm just throwing that out there, it just occurred to me.
I, I think we're kind of belaboring this right now and we're overthinking it. Did you, did you want something?
I would just like to say that if there is the circumstance, unfortunately, where there is a person that needs to be removed, that it, it should occur immediately after the third, um, you know, non-appearance.
The removal of a committee member or a board member is by commission, so quickly, can only happen so quickly.
Yeah, we would, we would vote on it.
So, we would have to wait for a commission meeting for that to occur, but understanding your point, but the process would be for you all to have the authority to do that.
Maybe we should have one alternate set up.
Now, could we not, could, hey, we're spending a lot of time on this and this is, just goes to my point, that committees take up a lot of resources. So, you know, the amount of time we just spent talking about them already, um, unless anyone has anything to add, yes?
May I, can I, just one clarification, I didn't hear and I might've missed it, but the appointments, are they gonna be January first or are we moving to fiscal year?
My understanding is we're leaving it January first.
January first, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make that.
So that, that answers all my questions, so I, I will be able to prepare a, a final for you for second reading.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll, we'll fund them. One, one person at a time, please. Who wants to be recognized? Go ahead, you're recognized.
So F, we're going to leave as is, correct?
Excuse me?
It is, F, we're going to leave as is.
Can you remind me, F, in what regard?
Liaison, liaison.
Oh, the, yes.
Liaison. Two F. Two F is broad enough that we can leave it as is, correct?
Oh, you're talking with regards to sufficient knowledge, experience, judgment?
Yeah, it's broad enough that, um, you know, I think we don't have to touch it.
We've agreed to it.
I have something you don't mind, please, about your children.
I, I, I actually do mind because we, we, we are trying to stick to the rules. So if you'd like to speak, please sign up to speak later on. Okay, so, all right. So how are we to make this motion then if we're?
As amended.
As amended. Okay, so I need someone to make a motion?
So I make a motion to approve, um, to approve the ordinance with the amendments that you've already enumerated. Second.
Commissioner Stuyvesant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Svechnikov?
No.
The ordinance passes on first reading four to one. Second reading will be scheduled for me.
Great, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is ordinances for second reading. Nine A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number 2022 dash 595, approving budget amendment number BA 2223 dash O2 to the city's operating capital improvement budget for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. The general fund, street maintenance and construction fund, special revenue fund, capital projects fund, and stormwater operations fund. Authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date.
Honorable Mayor and Commission, uh, this budget amendment is necessary for the following reasons. Um, in all funds, um, it's to record fund balance carryovers as of 9/30/22, um, to record purchase order carryovers from 9/30/2022 and, um, routine transfers between existing, um, budget accounts. Uh, in the general fund, um, it's to record, um, respective budget increases to revenues in which we've, uh, actually received, um, them already. Um, transfer funds to the ARPA fund for, um, eligible ARPA expenditures that have been incurred this year, um, to add funds for the commission retroactive, um, pay increases, salary increases per the, uh, Consumer Price Index, um, to transfer funds from the HR Department to the Police Department for the 22, 23, um, step plan raises. Um, and then to record transfers out to capital projects for an increase in appropriations for the Atlantic Isles, uh, Bridge Rehabilitation and the Golden Shores, uh, Pump Station. Um, in the Street Maintenance and Construction Fund, um, it's to add funds for the purchase of a dump truck. I do wanna note that that was added from the first reading. Um, this dump truck was, um, budgeted in the 2021, 2022 budget. Um, there was a purchase order, however, the vendor was not able to accommodate that request. The purchase order got canceled, so therefore it was an appeal carryover, so this needed to be added. And that's actually later, um, on the agenda as far as a resolution repealing the original one and, um, actually requesting approval for the new one. Um, in addition, um, a bus and van purchase and then, uh, related, um, increase for the, um, ancillary equipment and graphics for these vehicles. Um, the ARPA fund, um, kind of already mentioned that, so that's a transfer coming from the, um, general fund over to the ARPA fund for the, um, eligible expenditures. And then, um, in the capital projects and stormwater capital funds, um, the capital project carryovers. And then, um, as already mentioned, the transfer in from the general fund for the Atlantic Isles and Golden Shores Pump Station.
Great. Thank you, Tiffany. Commissioner Lama, do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Viscaro?
Just the one, so with the, um, with the dump truck, so it wasn't in, it wasn't in the first reading, but it's now in the second reading. But then it all passes, I guess may, maybe this is my question for, for legal, right? It passes as if, on second reading as, this way, right?
Correct.
Okay, then, I'm good, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, I'm good, happy with, uh, the pump station in Golden Shores. Finally, we need to get that going. We did great with, we had no flooding issues and I'm glad that we're adding sewers and, um, people in Golden Shores are gonna be very happy.
Okay, um, just like zoning, I don't like when they put us all this together. I said that before and I'm gonna say it again. I don't like these combos, cause I would like, I would rather vote in each item on its own. Uh, as, as an example, um, with the polietropical, it's not the same thing to vote for the color that while, if they come for the color and that they wanna build a rooftop on top of it. And then it's put together, so maybe I'm okay with the color, but now with the rooftop or vice versa. So in this case, I feel the same, um, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable when, eh, we have to vote, uh, as a group with all these. Uh, with many, many of the things, I agree, with some I might disagree or have more, eh, questions. One of them is, for example, with the, eh, building fund, um, there is around $7 million restricted, um, restricted to what?
For building purposes. So permitting inspections, it can only be used for building purposes, so it's restricted to the building.
It means being caring.
Operations.
Yeah, for, 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 so I would like a, an opinion, a written opinion of exactly how those, uh, that fund can be used. Because it, it just continue increasing, increasing and I wanna know, like, what can we do exactly with that restricted fund? So, um, having said that, eh, in the future, um, right now it's 8/30. So I know, eh, i- i- it will prolong the conversation, but I would rather have each individual of these, um, items to be able to vote on each one on his own. So that, that is my comment.
So for clarification, um, I'm, I'm assuming that during the agenda review, you had requested this from Tiffany to, to separate them?
Yeah. I, I was not in the first reading, so I, I did not, I, I asked for this before, not, not during the, this agenda review, no.
Okay, so just in fairness to Tiffany, that's why I wanna make sure she, you know, that, is this the first she's hearing of it?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so Tiffany, just for, for, for the sake of clarification, can you explain how that would work if that?
Well, I, I guess I need further clarification because there is many transactions in here. So when you say separate, do you mean separate by fund? Do you mean s?
Which one do you have an issue with, Commissioner Stuyvesant? Which one did you not feel comfortable voting on?
No, no, like, like I said, this is the second reading, so, um, I don't wanna get more time on this. Um, it's just, um, it is, I don't think, um, everything should put like together i- i- in this way. Like I said, I had no problem with the ARPA funds, et cetera, being there, um, with the other capital project funds, um, maybe like the historic, eh, build, eh, bridge in Atlantic Isle. I know that a decision hasn't been made there, so they haven't been able even to meet with the Historic Preservation Committee. Um, and I did ask this question during my meeting, during my agenda review, so I understand the why. Uh, however, um, having all this put together, I don't think it is that convenient for the sake of everybody. So we have only the option of yes and no, and I, I don't think it's fair for us as well, so that, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so if I hear you correctly, correctly, you're not specifically have an issue with this, but you're, you theoretically, you'd like to see things separated.
Yeah, I don't think it matters.
Right.
If I may?
Please, go ahead.
Then Valerie, I, I, I want you to clarify this for us because, um, once something, my understanding is, once something is on second reading, once things are grouped like this, it re, I remember this, this, um, when we had, we had the cola and other things grouped together.
Yes, yes, yes.
And you wanted to pull out the cola.
Yes.
And we didn't discuss it, then probably we should've. But once it's in second reading, I, you can't pick it apart, right? Once it's in second reading, it's all or nothing, right? You can't just isolate one item, is that correct?
You can adopt it as amended, so if you're gonna amend it to remove a portion of it, certainly you can. As long as the title doesn't change, then yes, you could still make changes on second reading.
So if we wanted to, not that we are, but if, you know, if there was like, you know, item 87, if we wanted to pull item 87 right now out of, uh, grouping, we would just have to agree on that and, and then in second reading.
The budget would be adopted as amended.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. So I have a question. Um, eh, again, for the sake of clarity, the dump truck. So we had it budgeted in 21.
21, 22.
21, 22. We didn't get it. We can get it now. Maybe this is not a question for you, maybe it's a question for Audra. What have we been doing without, how, how we, we've managed without, why do, eh, my question is, why are we buying it now? What, what were we doing in the meantime?
Yeah, that's not.
Yes, I, I figured that.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize for taking so long to get up here. This dump truck was ordered during the 21, 22 year, early in the year. They waited all year. They got by, of course, because they're running an older dump truck that's extremely rusty and got a lot of physical defects to it now and, and it's breaking down and et cetera. They're getting by with it. They were waiting. That PO did not ca, get canceled until, what was it, November? It was November of 22. We were already into this fiscal year when the PO got canceled. It was a timing issue. She had pulled the, the, um, purchase orders for carryover shortly thereafter it got canceled for purposes of putting him in as carryover items. We had canceled it and had not, normally it would've carried. And then the budget would've carried and it wouldn't have become an issue or been in this budget amendment as a separate add-on. We did not realize because of timing that that PO got canceled and yet we were doing a replacement for it as soon as the vendor could not provide that dump truck.
No, 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 I understand, I meant what we, you answered my question. We have a dump truck. It's old.
It is old.
Okay, so that's.
It's a 2005 model, it's rusty, it's in bad condition.
Okay, that was my question, so.
But we're getting by.
Right, so I mean, you know, I think you can sense the theme, I'm just being extremely careful. W- w- we need to be careful with what we're spending money on, uh, based on our conversation and our meeting earlier today about the budget. This is something that I'm going to probably belabor as, as, as we go along. Um, and to Commissioner Stuyvesant's point, as far as really looking at some of the, the smaller details and, and not necessarily grouping everything together, certainly not individually, but perhaps there's a different way that we can look at this so that it's not all or nothing. Um, with that said, I do want for, again, um, I, I wanna make sure that we have the ultimate trust of the public and we need to be transparent and we need to over, um, explain rather than under. In, in the first reading, we had discussed the, the, uh, cost of living increases, the, the error that we found, and you were gonna come back with the actual amount that we currently have, cause before it was an estimate and it, again, it just for the people that were not here last time, if you could please clarify that.
Yes, so.
Thank you.
Those were salary increases based upon the Consumer Price Index.
Right.
Um, previously, many of them had been according to the cost of living.
Correct.
Amount. Um, the amount is, um, 72,000, um, for all commissioners going back to 2007. Um, on top of that would be benefits, um, totaling about 85,000.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, if there's no more questions?
Public comment.
Oh, I, that, sorry about that.
I, I have a comment, hold on. So, I, I, I understand, um, obviously you're, you're, you're looking at everything, you're putting the books in order, you're transferring here, you're doing, you're cleaning up, let's say, right? Um, I think what it would make eas, what it would, uh, it would make it easier if, because looking at the budget narrative, you know, it's kinda hard to follow and I think if you put like a spreadsheet to kind of say, this is what I did, I know there's 10 line items that we're, we're, we're discussing here, um, but if you could put some sort of spreadsheet together to kind of make it visually a little bit easier to follow, I think it would be good.
Okay. So there is a spreadsheet, but just in hearing every. Okay, so there is a spreadsheet, but just in hearing everyone's comments, my initial thought process right now is to perhaps separate it by fund and purpose. And maybe that might help
Yeah.
you understand it better without separating all transactions.
And just for, again, clarification, this isn't a cleanup.
No, this is, I mean.
You're not cleaning anything up.
Not a cleanup. This is.
I just want Tiffany to, to explain.
This is specific to fund balance carryovers, adjusting that. There are technically unaudited, but we are basically finished with our audit. Our purchase order carryovers, um, as far as routine transfers between accounts, where we may be overutilized and underutilized, so just to get those back squared. And then additional appropriations, transfers of the HR amount that's, we budgeted in HR, but it's really for the PBA, and so at the time, we hadn't negotiated that yet. So now we're transferring that over. So it's, it's specific to items that are identified on the summary page.
On the, on the narrative?
Mm-hmm.
And when you say spreadsheet, are you referring to the narrative as a spreadsheet?
No, the other 21 pages.
Okay, no, I'm thinking a different spreadsheet. I'm thinking a.
So I, I think it suffice to say that during the agenda reviews, there should be some more time spent reviewing this so there's better understanding, potentially, because that, that information is there, and I know Tiffany's available for as much, or as little as you need her to be. Okay, please.
Yes, I'd also like to say that I have had the opportunity to review a lot of the vehicles that we're replacing that are rusted and almost unusable at this point. And we've been waiting through COVID for replacement, and we've been delayed with chip issues and cancellations. And we do have old vehicles that absolutely, I give my word, that need replacement.
Okay, thank you. I'll take a motion?
Yeah, public comment.
Public comment.
Norman Adelco.
What a disgrace. The budget process was supposed to be a pure, clean process where the public would have once a year opportunity to see what was being discussed. Instead, this commission and this administration obfuscates, hides, and moves items from one line to another to achieve secret goals that were put in place before the budget was ever approved and the public had the opportunity to speak on it. Certainly, it's a total waste to pay us, former commissioners, former mayors, some $80,000 because we chose to take monies less than what we were entitled to because we were donating that knowing damn well that the economy at the time didn't justify us to get paid by the amount that we did. However, if you were going to do what you are going to do, because I know this is a waste of time, you're gonna do it anyway, at least have the decency to bring up the item so that the public can discuss it. I don't know how you're gonna give money back to a few of our dead commissioners and how they're gonna get additional pension benefits. That's just one example of this mess that you've created by lumping it all together. It's also interesting to find out that you made some adjustments, but you didn't make all adjustments. I talked to Tiffany about why didn't you also increase the budget for the amount of income that you're gonna get now because interest rates are higher? Oh, because, the answer? I wasn't told to put that in. So it, it's a pick and choose thing, and it's, again, something to deceive the public, and you all should be ashamed of yourselves because I know you're gonna pass it. So I'm just wasting my own breath here, I know. As to what Mr., I'd say Commissioner Stivison had asked before, the reason to break it apart was to make it clear what each item was about, not to lump it all together. If the commissioners had taken time to read it, they could see there were seven or eight items listed from A to whatever alphabet you got to. Each one of those could have been separately explained. There could have been a public workshop to handle all this. But no, you'd like to have a floating budget that you can keep changing. You can add trucks whenever you want. You can add a bridge whenever you want. And you don't have to go follow the rules of making a clean budget once a year and then living by that budget. A budget was supposed to be something you lived by. It wasn't something that mandated that the actual had to agree afterwards with the budget. It was a guideline for the future. But instead of locking into a fixed budget and working through the year, every time somebody comes up with an idea here, oh, we'll just amend the budget and put it in, instead of waiting till next year. Again, thank you for the wasting of your time.
Thank you. And I, I just want to say that, everyone, please know that it is never a waste of time for you to, to come up and speak. We, I certainly can speak for myself and probably the rest of the commission, we do, we do hear you. And, and certainly, as a former mayor, we, we appreciate your, the historical information that you give. And during our budget meeting today, we had a very lengthy conversation about how we can move forward and perhaps not repeat mistakes or processes that were set in place so that we don't end up doing things like that. So with that being said, does anyone have anything else that they wanted to add?
Yeah.
Please, go ahead, Commissioner Viscara.
Thank you. Look, when we, when we talk about the budget, this is, for those of you who weren't in the workshop earlier today, I mean, I always, I've been saying, like, it's important to discuss it in, within a context. It's not just about the dollar signs. We have, we're supposed to, you know, best practices is you have to replace cars every so many years. And we, for, as Vice Mayor said, you know, he, like, our vehicles are in very poor shape. I don't, it's frustrating to me that at every other meeting, like, we're looking at another car, another truck, because it is, I don't, I don't wanna have to deal with it every month. But we don't control the supply chain issues. We didn't invent COVID. We didn't manage with it. That's out of our control and we're having to do what we can. And it's, you know, it's, I understand, it's not always pretty, but it's, it's getting it done. It's, it's how it's being presented to us, and we're fixing things as we must because that's when they're available. And as far as, you know, so we're not just amending it because it's something that we want, right? And if things were not done differently, like, my, my only comment that I would, that I would make, it's, you know, if, if, if previous commissions decided that they were gonna take less or whatever, that's nice, then you should have amended the charter. All we're doing, because then you're not following the charter. You're in violation of the charter. We can make an oath that we're gonna follow the charter and the Constitution. So when we don't follow it and then we don't bother to change it, then we're in violation of that. All we're doing right now is making the, the corrections back to 2007 for what should have been done. If we wanted something different, we should have taken the steps to do it differently, and then we wouldn't have to be doing this cleanup job. And if, and if I'm, if I'm understanding, based on the conversation we had, and I don't remember if it was with you or, or in my agenda, but there will be an option to accept it or decline. Is that correct? Am I, am I remembering that properly? And if you don't like it, then you can decline it.
No.
Wait, just one percent of the time, please. Go ahead. We did look at that option and legal counsel advised that that was not appropriate.
Then you can donate it back to the city if you'd like. I will be happy to take the money.
So, all right, um, for, for the, we did bring this up last time. What is the, the logistics of the commissioners that are no longer with us? How is that going to work? And, and the, the, it is a, the comment about the, the benefits, how is that going to work?
We're currently researching it with legal to find a solution for that.
Okay.
Whether it be through their trust or heirs, but we will figure it out.
Okay.
I, I'd like to add something. Yeah, just following Commissioner Viscara's comments. Yeah, I mean, these are errors that none of us were here. This is going back to 2007, okay? Obviously, you, you were here, Mayor, so I don't understand, you know, these were things that were not picked up, how did these things happen? So obviously, right now, what we're doing is we're following the charter and we're trying to make it right, just like we're trying to make right the, the issue and the discrepancies that happened within the, um, the comp plan. And then obviously, you know, from a historical perspective, we're here to obviously follow certain rules and clean up certain things that by chance or by whatever reason, they were not done right. So, you know, it's, if any commissioner would choose to give that money back to a community or charity, that's their decision. This is a free country, you know, so, yeah, it's, people have the, 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 the choice to make, so, yeah.
Tiffany, just for, for me personally, I, can you please clarify when you, when you made the statement? Or, or as Norman said, the statement about adjusting it to show the income, what that meant?
Um, we, we did have that conversation. I did not say I was not told to put it in.
Well, no, I mean, what, 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 what is that? What are we talking about, the income?
Um, from investment earnings?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Okay.
I can provide it to you.
So there is investment earnings that is not calculated here?
Yeah, I can get that number for you. I.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have it with me.
All right, well, for me, based on what the, the comments and the additional information that I would like to get clarification on.
And actually, I'm looking at it now. I did increase the investment earnings.
You did, so.
I did. I'm looking at the general fund, which is page two. So you have the narrative page, then you have page two. I am increasing it.
So you did increase it?
$45,000.
Okay, all right. And then, so what happens when we get the clarification for how we're managing whatever that is, that amount, and how, where that goes? What happens to, to the budget then? If, does that change again?
No, there wouldn't be a budget change because you will have voted to provide the money, and that's what we will do.
To whom?
Whomever the heirs are of the person or their, their estate.
But is this something that we can vote against?
You're voting on it now for second reading.
No, I know. I'm saying, I had asked this question, I believe I asked this question in the first reading.
Right, which is the charter requires that the compensation be paid.
Okay. All right. If there's no more questions, discussion, do we have any more public speakers?
No ma'am.
Okay. Well, that'll take a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stivison?
No.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Svechn?
No.
The ordinance passes three to two.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item is an ordinance, amend, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, amending chapter 217 of the Sunny Isles Beach Court of Ordinances titled Rented Property and chapter 231 titled Solid Waste to restrict the times trash and recycling receptacles can be placed out. Amending sections 231 dash 33 to revise the penalties for violations of chapter 231, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is the second reading of an ordinance restricting times for trash and recycling bins.
Okay. Are there any questions or public comment?
For the record, there's no one that signed up to speak in person for this item, but we did receive a public comment or an email addressed to the commission regarding this item.
Right, that we all got. Um, yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I, I don't see any, um, any harm in extending our ordinance a few hours to make it easier for a resident that is assisting another resident in bringing in their pails. If that person happens to work a night shift and he doesn't get home until the morning to help out the next door neighbor to bring the pail in by nine o'clock the next morning, I believe that, that should be acceptable.
Okay, so just so that the public knows what we're talking about, this was, uh, this is the second reading for an ordinance regarding the garbage cans that are only in really two areas in the city, Atlantic Isle and Golden Shores. And the impetus for this was because we were receiving, or at least I was, and I think you all as well, complaints from residents that people were leaving their garbage out for days and days and days, and it was overfilled, and what we were finding was potentially this, these were illegal short-term rentals where people were using them just for the weekend, filling it up, and whoever was taking care of that property just decided they can, you know, leave it out there for as long as they want to. So I, I was really on top of the city manager a lot, saying, you need to send code out, what's going on? These garbage cans, you know, the garbage would fall over, especially when it was windy. And so this is how this came about. But for clarification, you know, we have always been, I believe, pretty neighborly and not penalize residents for this sort of thing. And there is a system in place that does allow people to have these conversations if you're out of town or, you know, correct me, Susan, if I'm wrong, there, we currently have online a, a place where you can sort of check yourself off as you're not gonna be around, and there's a possibility to as well, put something in there where we can have more flexibility for actual residents as opposed to these, what I call, party houses. Right, we currently have an option online to do a watch order, so we could add to that, that they could ask for some type of assistance with that. Okay. Or consideration. Because currently, how has this, I have seen an immediate improvement in the neighborhood. I mean, immediate, it was incredible how quickly it became just cleaner from people really pulling their garbage in and paying attention. So, please, go ahead.
Yes, my only concern is our need to not have to negate parking, uh, tickets written by code enforcement. You may have a code enforcer that doesn't realize that you have a person, a neighbor that's helping out the neighbor next door, but he doesn't get home from work, like I said, until the next morning to bring the pail in, and he goes and writes a ticket. So the extension till nine o'clock the next morning is only to help us to not have to negate tickets that might be written incorrectly.
Okay, so currently, it's till five, what is it?
It's 5:00 PM the day prior and midnight the day of pickup.
Midnight the day of.
Midnight.
But would there be anybody that is giving tickets out in the middle of the night?
No.
Most likely not.
Most likely not. And so I, I just, I believe that if we have, to have a strong ordinance so that people understand how important this is, it needs to kind of stay strong. I, I think that especially since we have Helena here and we have staff here, there's an understanding that we're not going to penalize residents. Are you thinking of someone in particular that has told you they work at night and they're concerned about this?
Well, there are.
I'm asking just so, is, is this just what if, or there is something that you wanna share?
I just don't see the difference between midnight and nine o'clock the next morning when code enforcement first comes in to go do their rounds. So if you have it till nine, it's no different than midnight, except it's giving the person that may, may be assisting a neighbor till, you know, nine o'clock the next morning to bring the pail in, which I see as only a consideration.
Oh, how does everyone else? How does everyone else feels? Commissioner Stivison? Commissioner Lama? You guys don't have houses, so you don't even know what we're talking about.
You don't get to have an opinion now.
Um.
I don't, I don't have a house, no.
Okay, so.
I could give you my apartment.
No, Commissioner Viscara?
Well, I, I wanna commend this resident who, who, that, the email that Mauricio shared with all of us because this person had a concern, did their homework, planned in advance, communicated appropriately. planned in advance, communicated appropriately, um, he did, I mean, I, and he brought up a good point. Um, I had not considered, you know, he didn't say it this way, but, but yeah, there are people who, who work, you know, in restaurants and in, and in, who work night shifts for whom this, this, um, schedule that we proposed may not be, um, um, workable, and you may forget to ask your neighbor to do it, or maybe you don't have a nice neighbor, or they don't like you, or whatever, so you can't always, um, depend on that. So I, I thought that these were fair, um, fair points that were brought up, brought up, especially that our schedule may not be in compliance with the, the hour, the hours that we propose may not match up with the schedule of the pickup. I don't know if we looked into that or not, but I, I thought that the request was very reasonable, and, um, I don't have a problem changing it. But kudos to, to this gentleman, Patrick Dunn.
Yes.
I liked the way he, I liked the way he did it, very good.
Patrick Dunn is actually the person that put me onto the light at, um, 189th Street and Collins.
Um, okay, so if there's no more discussion, I'll take a motion. Wait, before we do that, uh, I just have a question, um, another question, rather. So, uh, we haven't started giving out any sort of citations for this, correct? It was a, the...
Right, we, we were just educating the public. We did door hangers and let people know, and that's how this, that was the genesis for this comment.
So have we at all sort of, besides visually looking at it, have we been at all keeping track, or, you know, have, have, have we had any issues where, where there was people that, that were not able to pull them in? My question is, is that why did we decide on 12 o'clock and not nine o'clock? What was the thinking? Because I'm imagining it was an arbitrary, and since it's working, that's what my concern is, changing something that's working.
We wanted, uh, according to our research, we wanted garbage cans, recycling bins to be brought in the same day they were picked up, so they wouldn't be sitting out there overnight.
Right.
But, right, what was the thinking overnight versus nine o'clock? That, that's my question. Is it because we were concerned there was going to be a storm? What was the, the thinking?
Those were some of the considerations of just being unsightly and sitting out there overnight.
Okay.
Right. I went stark, no one really sees them anyway.
So...
And to that point, I'm so sorry?
Go ahead.
I actually, uh, not in your neighborhood, but I actually took out one of my side mirrors with, with a garbage can that I, that I, um, that I didn't see. So that's a, that's another hazard.
Okay, so, um, I'll take a motion as, oh, do we have any public speakers besides the email? Okay.
So we're amended.
So I just want to make sure that we're clear. So the consensus is to amend it so that pickup would be 9:00 AM the day following?
The timeframe to bring the pails in?
Correct.
Nine o'clock the next morning, yes.
So that, so that we, uh, Atlantic Isle and Golden Shores has different days, correct?
Monday, Thursday.
Yeah, so Atlantic Isle is, uh, no, Golden Shores is Monday, Thursday.
Saturday.
So it's all the same, okay.
Okay.
And we did talk about this before as far as the, uh, the trucks that go around, uh, cleaning the streets, because there was an issue where they were going around and cleaning them when there was garbage cans there. So is this going to in any way affect that? Because that was a consideration, that they had to be removed so that when the trucks are coming and cleaning the streets, they're not going around the garbage cans.
Well, to that end...
One second.
Yes, that is a consideration.
Okay.
But that's not really a consideration, because now we have sand, um, along the curb area where the, where the trucks would be cleaning the street. They don't do that now because of the undergrounding.
Right, but that's Golden Shores, that's not Atlantic Isle, and that, that is going to change. So that is something to keep in mind, that this, this is, there is other reasons besides, um, you know, the storm. It's in order to get the streets clean in the morning and not go around the garbage cans.
So will it be better 7:00 AM instead of 9:00? What, what will be, what would you recommend if we want to extend it a little bit? Because I, I know they are very early in the morning, they're very, I see them.
They start, uh, street sweeping between 4:00 and 5:00 AM, yeah?
Right, yeah.
To get out of the way before, before all the traffic, exactly.
Yeah, I see them, yeah. Okay, so it is not convenient to change the timing then? Consider that, yeah.
Okay, so do we have more discussion?
Well, with regards to the morning, I'd like, I, I mean, we're just sitting here, we're, right, I mean, we're just sitting here discussing it, but is it, is it a real concern that, that...
I've never heard a sweet, uh, street sweeper before nine o'clock in the morning.
Oh, I do, I see them, I see them. Yeah, they do very early. Very early, yeah.
But do they do it on the days of the garbage? You're saying yes?
Yes, yes, they do, they do. That, that has come up, and that was one of the reasons for asking people to put, put in their truck, um, garbage, um, pails. I think that there could be, so that we don't belabor this any more than we have to, I think that there could be a compromise perhaps, so that we make it so that if, we, you know, we talked about this, we need to be friendly to our residents, we need to be neighborly, and we need to be patient and not cite people just for the sake of citing them. So if there is a concern, and I, I agree with you, I appreciate the fact that, that the resident did voice this concern, but there's other factors that are involved in, in changing this. So could we, you know, this, this isn't that many houses, it's, uh, we can have the conversations where we can let the neighbors and the residents know, if you've got a special need, we can work with you. You, you have, we've always worked with residents when it comes to that sort of thing, that's the whole purpose of, of what we're doing up here. So is that something that we can do, where we can discuss, we can print something, send something, I don't know, email, call, whatever it is, so that they understand that we're not going to be standing there waiting for, for the clock to turn, you know, 12:01, and give them a citation?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, also, let me just say, in Golden Shores, how long is it going to be before those streets get paved? Another year?
Before what? The streets?
No, at least a year, correct?
No, sir, it should be finished before the end of this calendar year.
So when are they coming back with fiber?
All of the con...
Can they pave the streets before the fiber is put in?
All of the conduit is going in now at the same time.
Mm-hmm, okay. So the streets would be paved when?
Before the end of the calendar year. Okay, so, given that, do we have, uh...
Until then, there's no street sweeping.
There is street sweeping, there's absolutely street sweeping, we're cleaning the streets.
Yes.
With the sand?
All right, so, uh...
Really?
Unless someone wants to make an amendment, I'll take a motion as is.
I'll say, I'll first, yeah.
I would like to make an amendment to nine o'clock.
Okay, you're making a motion to make an amendment?
Motion to change the timing till 9:00 AM.
Okay.
May, can I just get a recommendation from staff, please? Like, what, tell me what you, tell me what would work.
We're bringing the item forward as is and recommending...
And that's your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Okay, so there's no second, um, then I'm taking a motion for as is.
As is?
The way it's written.
Which is currently is 12:00.
12:00.
Yes. So Commissioner Stuyvesant made the motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Mauricio?
Vice Mayor Joseph?
No.
Commissioner Stuyvesant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
The ordinance passes four to one.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is 9C, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, repealing Article II of Chapter 172 titled Charitable Donations of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date.
Valerie?
Uh, so as you guys already know, this is a, for second reading, the charter provides that charitable donations have to be by, uh, forevotes and approved by the commission. Uh, there was an ordinance in place that delegated that authority, provided some authority to the city manager, which was in conflict with the charter. Um, therefore, um, this ordinance repeals the ordinance that conflicts with the charter on charitable donations.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Viscara, do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Lama?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Commissioner Stuyvesant?
No comments.
All right, I'll take a motion. If there's any public comment? Oh, thank you, thank you.
No public comment.
No public comments, all right, then I'll take a motion. Commissioner Viscara, a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Stuyvesant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
The ordinance passes five to zero.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is a resolution approving a third amendment to the agreement with Georgia Enterprises for inspection and preventive maintenance services for HVAC equipment located at Government Center.
Mauricio, I think we missed, um, the water quality.
9D.
9D. Yes, I am so sorry, I made my notes in the wrong page, okay, sorry. 9D is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending chapter 235 of the City of Sunny Isles Beach Court of Ordinances, creating Article II to be titled Water Quality, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners and Staff. This is the second reading of our new water quality ordinance to, uh, conform with our MS4, uh, permit requirements with Miami-Dade County. I'll take any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Lama?
Nope.
Commissioner Viscara?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
Again, I'm, uh, bringing up the fact of fertilizers and insecticides on lawns that we, um, have, uh, county ordinances, but it's only for part of the year. I would like to see this, the city, um, enact an ordinance to, um, not allow for fertilizers and insecticides on lawns year-round.
Okay, Commissioner Stuyvesant, do you have? Susan, you come?
No, no comment.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Stuyvesant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
The ordinance passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, 10A?
10A is a resolution approving a third amendment to the agreement with Georgia Enterprises for inspection and preventive maintenance services for the HVAC equipment located at Government Center.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners and Staff. Uh, this is, uh, this is the third amendment for the agreement with Georgia Enterprises, uh, for the renewal for another year at the same rate of $31,480, and this is basically for HVAC inspection and general maintenance.
Okay. Commissioner Viscara, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Lama?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Commissioner Stuyvesant? Do we have any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Take a second.
Second.
Mauricio?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
10B is a resolution repealing Resolution Number 2021-3253 and approving the purchase of a 2023 Freightliner 114 SD conventional chassis setback axle vehicle from Tampa Truck Center.
I think we beat this one to death. Um, Commissioner Viscara?
I'm good.
Commissioner Lama? Vice Mayor? Commissioner Stuyvesant?
No issues.
Any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No, motion.
Oh, sorry.
So moved.
Getting a little late.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item, 10C?
10C is a resolution authorizing the Chief of Police to expend forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice federal forfeiture account to purchase automatic license plate readers, bulletproof vests, radios, and Ford F-150 trucks.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commission. The Police Department is seeking approval to expend Department of Justice forfeiture funds to purchase police equipment. At the direction of the city manager, a complete audit was conducted of police equipment. The purpose of the audit was to locate any deficiencies that needed to be addressed prior to an assessment for the purposes of accreditation. One deficiency of paramount importance was the expiration of police officer bulletproof vests. We are seeking approval to purchase 23 bulletproof vests and seven tactical carriers that will remedy that deficiency in an amount not to exceed $32,000. Additionally, due to the hiring of personnel to fill sworn police vacancies, there is a need to purchase handheld police radios and vehicle radios to make sure we have sufficient supplies. The purchase of the radios from Miami-Dade County will cost $47,778.50 and $17,800 for the vehicle radios. The Police Department is also seeking approval to expand Department of Justice funds to purchase additional automatic license plate reader sites. The new sites will be located at strategic locations and will enhance public safety. With the addition of these LPR sites, uh, to the existing locations, the Norman S. Edelcup K-38 School and several religious sites will be protected using this technology. We are seeking approval to expend $187,705.79, which includes a 10% contingency cost with Millennium Products inked for this project. Lastly, the Police Department is seeking approval to expand $232,149.56 to purchase four Ford F-150s from Bartow Ford for use by police supervisors. The F-150s will be given to current police supervisors whose current vehicles will be repurposed for newly hired officers. The Ford F-150s will assist police supervisors with traversing the city during inclement weather because of their higher ground clearance. These vehicles are also able to drive on the beach easier than other vehicles and provide the ability to haul items which can be useful.
Great, thank you. I, I think that, um, besides the fact this is forfeiture funds, we all have agreed on many occasions that public safety is paramount. Uh, Commissioner Stuyvesant, did you have any questions?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
No.
No. I agree with the need.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lama?
No, in agreement.
Commissioner Viscara?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, do we have any public speakers?
We don't, Madam Mayor, but before we make a motion, can we include the next three items since they're all related and they're all forfeiture funds?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, we just read 10B, 10C is a resolution authorizing, excuse me, we already did 10C, so...
10D.
This is terrible, man.
10D.
Okay, 10D is a resolution approving the purchase of four 2023 Ford F-150 trucks from, um, Bartow Ford. 10E is approving an agreement with Millennium Products for the purchase and installation of automated license plate reader recognition systems, and 10F is a resolution approving the purchase of police radios from Miami-Dade County.
Okay, I'll, so no public speakers on any of those? All right, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Vice Mayor, second, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next item, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 10G, a resolution ratifying an expenditure with Cochran USA to furnish
Aye.
All right, next item, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is ten G, a resolution ratifying an expenditure with Cochran USA to furnish and install a perimeter fence at Senator Gwennor Golis Park.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Commissioner, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners and Staff. Basically, this is an addendum or memorandum resolution to add some funds to the project. We need to purchase additional fence panels to complete the fence enclosure around the park.
Okay, Commissioner Seivison, do you have any questions?
No comment.
Vice Mayor?
No issues.
No questions.
Commissioner Lama?
When is it gonna be done?
Finished.
As soon as we get, once, once you approve this tonight, then we can get the purchase order and order the fence panels. So it'll take about, you know, actually, I don't have a good idea. I didn't order the first set. I'm not sure how long it'll take. But you're looking at probably three to four weeks to fabricate the new panels because they're all custom-made, basically.
Okay. And then installation?
Should be within a week.
Week, okay. All right, thank you.
To manage expectations, um.
Let's double it.
I had heard, I had heard six to eight weeks for custom panels.
Okay.
All right, so right now, what do we have there? Do we still have that orange?
Temporary orange.
Temporary mesh there? There's some temporary chain link fence. There is, okay. Um, all right, thank you. Do we have any public speakers?
No.
I'll take a motion. So moved. Take a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So we already did ten each.
That's right, okay.
So now we're onto the discussion item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. So this is a discussion item regarding the temporary polling locations. For, uh, for clarity, we, we wanted to put this, or rather I did, and so did the City Clerk, so that people understand what, what exactly this means. Commissioner Viskara had, had mentioned before that, that we had the Charter Review Committee, and just as a reminder, we have a special election, uh, which is May twenty-third. Third, um, that is very specific to just the, the Charter. This is not to elect any person. This is specific to the Charter. And so normally, we would have the election locations as we would have any other location, uh, election. However, um, because of circumstances that are with, not within our control, two of the locations are not available. One is the church, which has an event that day, and Winston Towers one hundred, which has, uh, construction, so it makes it, uh, close to impossible to, to have it available for, um, for voter location, for poll location. This is temporary. This is not going to be, uh, permanent. Uh, and I had some people reach out to me, uh, somewhat excited about this, saying, oh, yes, I like this. I want to, to change where we would have our, our polls. If there is an interest to do that, because that has already been done when it was changed from intercoastal to Gateway, uh, in order to accommodate more parking and to make it easier, and that's really the idea, is that, you know, we want to have the poll locations that can accommodate as many people. That is something that you would do, uh, either through lobbying the Commission or, or the Clerk. My biggest concern with this was the Winston Towers one hundred building, which is one of our biggest, um, poll locations as far as amount of people that come there, and especially for the elderly, um, because they are walking there. Many of them are walking with walkers or, or wheelchairs, um, and so having them now, um, go to a different location, besides the confusion may, may seem, uh, like it would basically prohibit them from, from voting. So, uh, I had discussed with, uh, the City Manager and Deputy City Manager, the potential of having a shuttle bus there, um, and, you know, signage, so they understand that, that, that they, they will be brought to the other location, um, and as I understand, the buses are, are ADA compliance, so that anyone that has any sort of, uh, need will be accommodated. So I wanted to just put this as a discussion item, so people understand what it is we're doing and how, um, this isn't, uh, something that we do on a, on a whim. And I wanted to give the City Clerk an opportunity to expand on this as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just as you mentioned, just to reiterate, this is not a change that was initiated or asked by the city. This is strictly because of the, um, inconveniences that are presented at both locations. As you mentioned, with the church, they have an event that's going on and will not allow the use of, of the church during that time. And with Winston Towers, they have construction going on, um, that will affect, um, the, the elections. Uh, with respect to the Winston Towers location, that might extend beyond to the twenty-twenty-four general elections, just depending on the duration of the construction that they have going on. But as you mentioned also, Mayor, uh, we wanted to bring this forward and place this item on the agenda, so that we can notify the public as much as possible of these impending changes, because, you know, this does affect their, their right to vote, so we want to make sure that everyone is aware of these changes. So just, uh, to keep the Commission aware of what is going to be happening and what notices, um, these voters will be getting, is in addition to the notices that the Elections Department will already send out, um, they will be sending out what's known as a TTTPP card, known as a Temporary Polling Place Card. Essentially, what they do is that they receive this card in the mail. It's just like a voter registration card. They would take that with them to the new location, which is at Gateway Center, to be able to vote at that polling place. So in addition to that notification, um, we will also play notices, place notices in the newspaper, not more than thirty days, which is what's required by the Florida statute, not more than thirty days in the newspaper, and it'll be maybe two or three notices. In addition to that, we will also have social media posts, and we will update our, our website, specifically our elections page, uh, with this information. And on top of that, we will be sending out mailers to all the registered voters in those affected precincts. And if you look at the screens, that's exactly what the mailer will look like. It'll contain, uh, the information for both precincts, where they were previously located, and where the new temporary location will be.
Great, thank you.
If I may?
Uh, please, go ahead.
Having gone through the, through the change in location in, in my district, um, I can tell you, people will receive those little cards, and they will put them away where they normally put things away, and not realize that it represents a change, uh, in, in, in the location. So it's good that they have it, but they're probably gonna show up with their old ones or whatever. So it's, we have to keep getting the message out. Also, uh, maybe you can plug this, um, but, but it's the, uh, the town hall meeting. The, the solution to, to the transportation and, and the confusion is mailing ballots, which is gonna be an option. We made fourteen amendments. It's a lot to go and see a ballot with fourteen amendments and see it for the first time when you're standing in that, in the booth. I would strongly recommend that you ask for your mailing ballot, and you don't have to worry about the transportation. You can do it calmly. You can do your homework. You can ask your questions, um, and then, you know, just mail it in. I think that's the easiest solution to this.
To add to that, um, on top of the separate notices that we'll be sending out for these polling location changes, we also are required to advertise, obviously, our, our special elections, and that special election notice does contain the ballot questions. So they will be placed in not only the newspapers, but they will also be up on our website in our election page. And to address the people that may visit the old polling locations, the Elections Department will also place posters, um, that will notify them that the location has changed and direct them to the, to the correct location.
Questions?
Please, go ahead.
So Valerie, this is, question is for you. Are Commissioners allowed to, um, voice their opinion regarding the voting on these issues? Whether you would like, um, for residents to vote yes or no? Or Commissioners need to stay out of it?
Yeah. You are allowed by state law to express your opinion. However, you cannot advocate for or even provide information, so you, you can't try to persuade anyone to vote a particular one way or the other. But you are allowed to have an opinion as an elected official within this body here.
Okay, so how would you suggest us stating our particular opinion?
If someone asks you what your opinion is, you can tell them, but I would not do it in any sort of systematic way, either written or verbally. You should.
Not in any broad fashion.
Right, I would. If someone can, if someone asks you your opinion, what do you think of this? You certainly can answer it, uh, as an elected official. However, I would not in any way, shape, or form, um, schedule anything or have any sort of publication or any sort of dissemination of what that opinion is to the voters.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and please go ahead and plug the.
I, I want to add something. Um, for those that are not aware, we have a special election coming up on May twenty-third, and this has to do with the Charter, um, amendments that have been proposed. There are fourteen items. Um, some are rather simple, I would say. Uh, some are rather a little more, more complex, but, um, on April twenty-sixth, there's gonna be a town hall at Gateway Center where it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be conducted by Mauricio, uh, our City Clerk, okay, and, uh, by our City Attorney, Ed Dion, and they're gonna be explaining what these changes are about, and they could answer any questions that you may have. Uh, it is, it is extremely important that you come out and vote, because as you could see here by some of the discussions we had, there's certain things that perhaps are ambiguous. There's certain things that could be clear, and, uh, some of these, uh, changes, I'm expressing my opinion, I think that just would make, uh, our, our Charter perhaps stronger or more clear. So, um, please come out and vote. It, it is extremely important. You're not voting for somebody, but you're voting for actually are the core of a legal document of our government. You know, what gives us the right to, to, to be a city and to govern, basically. So it is extremely important that you come out. Please. And, and, and April twenty-sixth at five-thirty at Gateway Center, we're gonna have this town hall to explain the fourteen proposed amendments. And also, I'd like to thank the, uh, the, um, Charter Review Commission for, Committee, sorry, uh, for, you know, their hard work and for identifying some of these, uh, fourteen items.
Thank you. Roundtable. We'll also be discussing these at the roundtable.
Yeah, we, we'll also be discussing this the same day at twelve PM at Gateway Center. We're gonna be discussing, uh, these items as well, and, uh, this is for our senior roundtable. So if you consider yourself a senior, please sign up, and I'll see you there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, next item, Commissioner Seivison, is your item, twelve E?
Yeah, it's more a question than a report. Uh, where are we with our digital, uh, process for the building department? I don't know who's from staff can talk about it?
Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
We have begun the rollout of the digital permitting process. It's a multi-layered approach where, as of right now, we are rolling out some smaller, uh, less complex permits such as mechanical, but I'd like to ask Derek to come up and share with us some of the specifics regarding the logistics and the rollout schedule from an IT perspective.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. So the process has been live since the end of May for, uh, ten, uh, permit types. For those permit types, everything is accessible, uh, via the SmartGov portal. You can go in, uh, do your permit application, submit your documents. The Building Department is, um, slowly enabling, this has been, so we're now three weeks into this, uh, they are enabling, uh, additional permit types, uh, before we can fully enable everything. So there's been a lot of process reworking to make this happen in terms of how the workflow works through the Building Department. One big piece that's left to be done is the automation of, um, all of the documents once the process is complete in SmartGov, which is our permitting and licensing system. Uh, that all needs to be packaged together as a final set of documents, put into our electronic document system, as well as sent back to SmartGov for the owner contractor to be able to download those documents. It's a very tedious, uh, thing to do manually, uh, which is what they are doing right now for the permit types that are enabled. Uh, we have a solution that, uh, we began, uh, working on with a third party, uh, three weeks ago, so we're having them, um, automate this process. Once that is fully done and working, then we'll be able to, uh, enable the process for the larger multidisciplinary, uh, permit types. Uh, but it has, uh, gone very well so far.
Do, do we have a timeframe, um, how long we think it should take, or what can we do to help you? Like, what kind of resources you might need to speed that process?
We have the third-party vendor working on it already. It's only been a couple weeks, so there's no cause for alarm at this point. Um, it's not really delayed. Uh, I expect them to have it completed, uh, within a month, but I don't have a hard, this is custom work that they're doing for us, uh, to be able to, um, create this. I don't want to get too technical here, but they, they have to pull together all of the documents, put it into a, a single complete package with all of the watermarks and, and everything, and, um, send that back to the, um, SmartGov application, so that, uh, it can be downloaded by the user.
Can we have an update for the next commission meeting to see how we are in the process, um, of becoming digital?
I mean, I think.
In one month, yeah.
Yeah.
For now, yeah.
I mean, if it's on the agenda?
Yes, we can provide you with an update.
Is it similar to the Derm intake? What, uh, the system that Derm has in, in?
I'm not familiar with the Derm system, but.
It is not. They have a completely different custom-built system that costs millions of dollars.
But it was really good. Yeah, they have a really good system.
Millions of dollars, okay.
Well, we have a big fund, unrestricted fund.
Yes.
To use for buildings, so maybe we can.
Potentially.
Afford something there good.
That, that is a conversation we should definitely have during the budget conversation. Um, okay, thank you. Um, next item is yours?
Yeah, also, um, the park ranger, uh, we used to have park ranger back in the days. Uh, I believe he was taken out last year or the year before, last year. Uh, so we used to have, uh, six positions, uh, for the park rangers. Um, they will, uh, not only help keeping it clean, but also they will have like some sort of supervision in our park areas and playgrounds. Um, those positions are not there anymore, and I do see the need for it. So I wanted to entertain to, uh, bringing back our park ranger program, um, and giving the resources necessary to hire the people and be able to give that service that we used to. Right now, it is the, um, the police who goes when there's something going on there. Having the park ranger like we used to have them is more convenient and will free resources from the police. So I just wanted to have the discussion with you guys.
What department are they under?
They used to be on the park and recreation. Yeah, park and recreations.
So, um, Commissioner Lama, did you wanna chime in? No?
Okay, so I'd like to understand the current situation we have. Uh, obviously, I see that, you know, there's personnel that come by. I think they're on some sort of rotation basis. I don't, um, know in detail their, their schedule or anything. Obviously, we, we've had some issues with, you know, perhaps some fights or some unruly behavior. And, uh, I just wanted to hear from staff what, perhaps what their, uh, ideas are or what their solutions are, or, you know, get a little more feedback in that regard.
So if there's consensus to bring back in enhanced park worker type of thing, we will work with staff to come up with the best, most economical way to accomplish that. What Commissioner is referring to is when, you know, we had, we built a schedule that ensured that we had a person in our five major parks at all times. Um, that is where we cut back, and they do, they rotate through, so you do see them sometimes, but they are going from park to park to park. So there, there's a lot of times that you will see, you know, gaps in, in, you know, in personnel being there. So, um, you know, we will, through the budget process, we will look at, you know, where we may be able to cut in other areas.
Thank you.
Replace, add and replace, or, uh, replace instead of add. We'll definitely try to look creatively at how we could do that if, if, if the Commission deems that to be a, an important issue for you.
Okay.
I, I, I think it warrants a discussion, and, um, obviously, there's some parks that have more, let's say, traffic, more people in it, and perhaps, you know, contribute to, let's say, eighty percent of any issues or require more attention, let's say, so perhaps we could start looking at different options.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I think that a lot of what you're referring to, Commissioner Seivison, is the, the challenges, the problem, actually, that we have a pelican, um, with, with the kids, uh, with the water balloons and that sort of thing. Is that what, what you're referring to?
No, not only pelican. Like, uh, I've been using the playground for the last fifteen years with my kids, and we always had like the park rangers, like, uh, the park people going around and helping and cleaning and like breaking up the fights as well, et cetera. Um, I, I don't know why, um, they took it from the budget of why, uh, we wipe out that position, uh, but when that happened, you could see the change on, on, on the playgrounds, on the park, in the dynamic. So, um, I just wanna bring back what we used to have, because I, I, I witnessed that it does work. So they were there. Right now, many of the, where used to be our park rangers are in another positions. They continue working for the city, but not in the same position. They're going up, um, but, um, I just think that it was something that was working. I don't know why we took it out. I don't know if it was a budget issue or COVID. I don't exactly the, the reasoning, but, um, it was my experience that it did work when we were having those adults there. And so I would like to bring it back, what we used to have.
I just want to be careful that we're not, um, for lack of a better word, babysitting people's kids, right? So that, you know, if, if, if we have children or adults, anyone that are, uh, not following the rules at the parks, then we have consequences where they are not allowed to come back, and you're, you know, you're right. It would be fantastic if we had someone there all the time, but I think that we just really have to be cognizant of, of, of the budget and make decisions as to where it's most important, um, and.
In way, in way, because it's now always.
Right, of course. Right, of course. And when and where. And we've been hearing this for years, and I think that's one of the reasons that the teen center was developed, was to help these young residents find a place for their energy that was outside of, you know, the parks. And so, for me, I, you know, I'd like to see the staff come back and say, okay, how do we solve for this without, you know, busting the bank, really, and bring back some more people so that we have more services at the, like Commissioner Llama said, at the parks where we're seeing a lot of people. And it goes back to what I said earlier, is really trying to keep track of what our residents, our residents are using the most, and how could we enhance their experience where we need to, and not just a blanket solution.
Yeah, and also, it's like an enforcement issue, because right now, we have people like smoking in the playgrounds. I've seen it like all the time, and you know, you don't want a parent to be the one saying, oh, don't smoke next to my kid, because that will potentially escalate. So if we have somebody from the city enforcing the rules that we have about the dogs, smoking, et cetera, it is better than coming from just any other resident or citizen. So that's like kind of the figure that used to have, when we used to have them. And again, it did work, I experienced, I seen it, and I just would like to have something that did work to bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
What were those people?
Pardon?
What were those people?
What were?
What was their title?
Of the parks people?
Yes.
They were the same title that they currently have, correct?
They were facility operation workers that transitioned into park maintenance technicians.
Did I get that right?
AKA park rangers, we used to call them like that.
So what was their enforcement? What were they allowed to enforce?
They could enforce the park rules. They had direct access to PD if someone was not behaving, but it was more about building the relationships-
So they had radios?
...and everybody knew who each other, you know, they knew who the people were, the people knew who they were, you know, and they wouldn't, they'd respect the parks when they were there.
So it was more public relations than enforcement?
Along with maintenance. When we tried just the public relations, we found it wasn't as useful of their time. So we gave them maintenance chores as well.
Okay. All right, please.
It is more to babysit the adults than the children, actually.
Well, that's even worse.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Those are the one misbehaving ones.
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing is, we perhaps need to take a closer look at the rules at the park and how those are, you know, enforced, and really, you know, it goes back to what I had mentioned before, having, you know, more signage at the beach, about the rules on the beach as far as the, you know, all the ordinances and the resolutions that we pass, making sure that people understand that we've done that and that it's not just limited to this room and people that see it on TV.
And that inclusive in the pier, because I don't know-
No, everywhere, absolutely, absolutely.
Because everybody's just doing anything, that there is fishing everywhere, when we used to have the person in the front, maybe it was part of them, the rules in the pier that were being followed a lot more than right now. Right now, at certain times, especially at night and the weekends, you see people fishing from the very beginning, throwing nets, smoking, dogs, you name it, everything is happening there. So if we need to have some kind of enforcement, it has to be through the people. So, and that's exactly the idea, to bring that figure now under the purview of the police, because we don't want the police to be there instead of doing patrolling in our streets, et cetera. So, going back, I'm sorry to be redundant, but we used to have them, it used to work, and just to bring it back.
All right, so we're on to Citizens Forum. I just want to remind anyone that is speaking, please, that if you have not filled out a card, fill out a card now, you're limited to three minutes. Be respectful of that time, and please address all your comments to me. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Rabbi Shay Mar.
He left.
Shay Mar, he left.
Left.
Okay.
That was regarding the red light.
Moshe Cohen.
He left.
That was also regarding the red light.
Elaine Pratt.
Same thing.
Same thing, okay. Jody Joseph.
Hi, Jody Joseph, 1-8560 North Bay Road, regarding what we were discussing before with children. I will always advocate for children, period. That comes first and foremost, anyone's personal opinions, but what we're not under, what we're not under, what we're not understanding is, and we have to realize this, when you have a child of a certain age, you could have ten kids with all straight As, but if they don't, if they're not involved in their community, correct? Do we all, well, okay, you can't answer that question. So to say that any child that lives in Sunny Isles Beach and their parents are involved, to not give them the opportunity to help build up, build up their resume for college entrance, is a really big mistake, and that's not right. And how do you stop there? I mean, this is, you have younger children, you're going to be running again for Commissioner. You're not sure, I don't know, maybe you may run for mayor, I know your son's age. I'm just saying, to be, to hold him back like that, or your children back, or our daughter, it's not about who you're related to, but to take that right away from them and to twist it and say, well, people sit, people gossip, these kids are teenagers. They're not sitting with their parents, what should I do? Everybody's busy. They have the right to just keep up their GPA. What do they do if nobody in Sunny Isles is going to let them, invite them to, you were saying, your kids talk about things. It's actually called, I know we go to, pardon me, the children go to the spot. I've never been there, I have no idea what it looks like, I've never set foot in there. My daughter wants to run, she told me, I'm like, you have enough on your plate, she wants to run for office. I have no control over that, but even when you're gone, should we do this to all people that care for their city so they know their children don't have a chance to advance at all because they live in Sunny Isles? That's not right. That's, also, take it further. What if we have a child on the spectrum and they want to run and get involved? What do we say, no, we can't because your parents are involved? I just think we have to think a little further into that, and maybe, rather than for personal reasons, because I'm glad most people agree that we shouldn't be doing that to our kids, are we checking for, you know, without getting too personal? Has anyone been expelled? Have they been in trouble in school for smoking cigarettes? I think we should look closer to that, rather than, for instance, like not allowing your daughter, or your daughter or son, or your son. And things rotate, you know, you have, and you as well, if you decide to run also. I just think that we have to look, there's a broader picture, and it's not just about people sitting around and gossiping with their kids, so-
Thank you.
-all about the kids.
Next speaker?
Next speaker is Michael Solomatin.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Solomatin, and I live on 1-7150 North Bay Road. And I'm here today in front of the mayors and commissioners of Sunny Isles Beach to tell you that I am currently going for Eagle Scout, which is the highest rank in scouting, and reaching out to you either personally or as a city to hopefully be able to fundraise my project and/or get volunteers. The project is building book stands along a trail located at Arch Creek Park. We currently need, the current project estimate is $2,000, and we currently do have some fundraised. And the main reason I'm coming here today is because I've done a little bit of looking, and you guys typically send out children each year over to Arch Creek Park, and throughout this entire meeting, you guys were talking about also helping neighboring communities. So I think this is definitely something you guys would probably be interested in, whether, again, that's personally or funding as a city. The main thing right now is, it is a bit in a crunch of time due to the fact that the project will be taking place in May, and we need to be able to secure supplies for people to build the stands themselves. I have a website and everything, if you're interested. I brought flyers with me today that I'd be happy to pass out to you all. And, yeah, so as just a citizen of Sunny Isles Beach, one of the very few, I'm sure, Boy Scouts that you've probably come across here in Sunny Isles, mainly because we simply just don't have a Boy Scout troop in the area, fun fact. So I'm hoping that, again, it's something that will benefit the community of Sunny Isles and even surrounding communities, and that we could help, that some of the city of Sunny Isles Beach would be willing to help and pitch in.
Great, thank you. I would love to help you with your project, and I'm certain there's others on the Commission. There are 501(c)(3)'s that are dedicated and devoted to this sort of thing, because I think for us as a Commission, especially since we've been talking about the budget right now, and how we're going to the budget, and you're giving us a really, really tight window, but there are other agencies that could potentially move a lot quicker, so do we, do we have our cards here?
Not here in the chambers, but we can get some that are in the lobby.
Please take my card, and I'll speak to you about it separately, and if any of the other commissioners would like to help, we all have sort of our own separate connections that can help with your project. I think that it sounds fantastic, but there's just not enough time.
Do you consider a GoFundMe page? Do you have a GoFundMe page or something?
Not a GoFundMe page, I set up my own website that lists all the details and how to donate.
Okay, thank you.
I will, before you go-
I'll take one of your flyers.
I'll trade you flyers. You take one of these, and you give us some of those.
Where is Arch Creek Park, by the way?
On 135th and Biscayne. And can, can you put your contact information, or is it in here?
Yeah, so if you scan the QR code, it will show you the contact information.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll just take the one, because we want to keep going.
But this was a trade, so you have to take some of it.
All right.
Thank you. Don't worry.
And you're welcome to take one of my cards as well.
Thank you.
You forgot something?
All right, well, we'll be in contact with you, Michael. Thank you for presenting this.
Perfect.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Jenna Barukovich.
The Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, I know it's very late, everybody tired.
Just your name and address, please, for the record, Jenna.
I patiently wait for my turn to speak, and I thank you for allowing me.
Jenna, 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 please, your name and address for the record.
Oh, my name is Jenna Barukovich, and I live in 419 Pointiana Island Drive, Sunny Isles Beach.
Thank you.
For twenty years. Again, I feel like a victim of Commissioner Fabioa Stuversant, who targeted me.
Jenna, could we please not name any names, just, all your comments need to go through the chair. We're not naming, we don't address any of the commissioners here directly.
Okay, for one of the commissioners, that would be correct.
That's fine, thank you.
At this point, I feel it would be disparaging, in my opinion.
Okay.
And, again, I was targeted for one of the commissioners of this commission for the reason known only to her. But it seems to me that she is trying to remove owners from a power board waiting list, and she is honored. I'm very disturbed, and I have a number of sleepless nights over this non-existing issue. The facts, the, one of these commissioners filed a report to Code Enforcement Complaint Department that my FERG appear had unpermitted plumbing when there were none. Code Enforcement Officer Dustin Oops, Code Enforcement Officer then issued violation based on the commissioner reporting, as he claimed he has his own inspection and make pictures of the pier. And the FIDAVIT document signed by a Code Enforcement Officer stating that all violation as cited in the Civil Violation CD 2023 269 on 3/24/23 that have been corrected and/or civil penalty has been paid. There was no violation in the first place, so no penalty were paid, and nothing was corrected. So the FIDAVIT, which is I got, is has wrong statement. How that could happen? That the body of governing in Sunny Isles Beach issue a FIDAVIT, signed it with the wrong statement on it? That's a question. And what commissioners will do to stop this? This is very disturbing, and it's absolutely untrue, and I become a victim of this. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, thank you.
I just wanted to know what Commission will do to stop the abuse of power and waste of taxpayer money, because after I meet with the city manager, three people came to observe my pier, and again, it was all body of Sunny Isles-
Jenna, Jenna, I know you've been really patient, but please finish up. Finish up, your time is up, so please finish up, thank you.
Okay, and they come and they saw that I have no piping on my pier.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers?
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, meeting adjourned.
I would just like to say one thing.
Okay, go ahead.
And I have been, in each time that I go to Aventura Mall, I bring with me samples of the state no-smoking regulations for covered areas, and I just want to point out that I've been successful in having Aventura Mall post new signs saying no smoking within 25 feet of all entrances. So that takes care of smoking in outdoor covered restaurants at Aventura Mall.
Okay, thank you. With that, meeting is adjourned. Okay, okay. Okay, hold on, hold on, Commissioner Viskar. All right, so just, okay, you filled it out for an item that was deferred, and, wait, 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 we are not on the record, because we, okay, I'm going to allow you, please come up. Okay, so, so here's the thing. Please remember that I was very clear, and I made the comment, and I've said it repeatedly, but I also want to acknowledge the fact that it is 10 o'clock, and you have waited, so please make your comments, your name and address for the record, please stay to the three minutes.
Of course. Joel Key, 402 Pointiana Island Drive. It was a mistake, somebody told us to put 12B, but it wasn't 12B, but-
Okay.
What I came to talk about is the same issue that the lady just spoke, about violations that were placed. In my case, I didn't do any connections, there were no connections on, and I still got the violation. So somebody went all around, just wrote the addresses of all the properties that have FERG piers, and decided to put a violation on it. And the only other issue is, after talking to several, to the property manager and everybody else, they are trying to get a bill, a permit for the association to resolve the issue, and it seems like the city is saying no, that everybody has to go on their own. The water service on the whole island is provided by the association, so it's not, I didn't disconnect it, I did not connect it, so why do I have to pay a fine, and why do I have to take a permit when it was my issue, when I haven't done anything? That's the only reason I'm here.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, ma'am? Please, your name and address for the record.
My name is Sandra Farber, and I live on Pointiana Island. And I have two questions, perhaps they're issues.
Ma'am, ma'am, I just want to remind you that you speak to the chair, to me?
I'm sorry.
Yes, you address the chair, and we don't go back and forth, this is your time to speak. Thank you.
Isn't it true that the responsibility and duty of court, code enforcement in Pointiana Island is to check permits before they issue violations? The second question is, I don't expect anybody- The second question is, I don't expect anybody to necessarily answer, but the second question is, when permits are available to the public, are they secret? Are they protected by some sort of privilege? I live on Pointiana Island. We believe one of our commissioners, I said you're not, I'm not allowed to say her name, which is Commissioner Seivison.
Ma'am, please. I, we only address me and the body, please, no names. Thank you.
We are getting violations on our island by a commissioner when no one has checked before their permits. People on the island are getting violated for nothing, and we believe that a commissioner who is a resident at the island is doing that for her own purpose and her own gain. And we object to the fact that she's able to do that as a commissioner, and she's wasting taxpayer's money and taxpayers' time to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Was there anyone else that filled out a card that was not able to speak? Okay, thank you very much. With that, will adjourn. Thank you.